Okay, Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. White seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves and Mr. Garcetti seconds. And colleagues, as I mentioned, unless there's an objection, I'd like to take items 22 and 23 out of order. Madam Clerk, if you can state what those items are and if we can have Mr. Martinez come to the center table.
Items 22 and 23 are communications from the city clerk and resolutions declaring the election results of Council Districts 10 and 14. Item number 10 is Council -- excuse me, 22 is Council District 10 and 23 is Council District 14.
Mr. Martinez.
Well, as you know, the special election was held and consolidated with the state election, and the county certified the results, and we picked up the results from the county at 8:30 this morning, and so the council is cleared to declare these results as they are in proper order.
Okay, any members of the council wishing to be heard on these items? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
So the results are certified and accepted by the City Council. For the clerk. The council will temporarily recess for a few minutes. You have a job to do.
Right.
Mr. Weezer, Mr. Weston.
[laughter]
Here, I'll get on this side just so that you're not obscured by your hand. You got your family? Okay. Here we go. Okay? Do you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Member of the City Council, 14th District.
Member of the City Council, 14th District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I have -- just need you to sign the big book.
clerk to do this one more time.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of member of the council.
The office of member of the council.
10th District.
10th District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer, Mr. Weston. clerk to do this one more time.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And the Charter of the City of Los Angeles.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of member of the council.
The office of member of the council.
10th District.
10th District.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President, and it's really an honor and a privilege to be here in these chambers. First and foremost, I want to thank family and friends who are here today. Thank you for coming today on this very momentous occasion for me and for the City Council. I see a lot of you in the audience who have been longtime friends and supporters and people who are working hard in this campaign, so thank you very, very much for being here. And to my colleagues, my now colleagues, I want to say I really feel privileged and honored to be here to serve with you in the service of serving the city residents of the City of Los Angeles. And, you know, a little over 75 years ago, my grandfather actually worked on the foundation for City Hall. He came from Zacatecas, Mexico, to -- to pull out the dirt with mules to build the foundation of this great City Hall. And who would have thought that 75 years later, his grandson would have been given the oath of office in these chambers? And that shows, I think, to me that the American dream lives on. It shows to me that the City of Los Angeles has a lot to offer to its residents, newcomers or those who have been here since its founding or even before that. That shows to me that with a good public education system, all is possible. And I know that today -- today actually is my last day on Board of Education for the City of Los Angeles. I had to resign my seat there, but although I leave that seat, I do not leave my commitment, passion, and dedication to continue to work on education issues for our children, and I strongly believe -- I strongly believe that the city has a much larger role to play working together in partnership with the school district to continue to improve the prospects of the many children who are there at LUSD so that they too can also live the American dream. I want to end by thanking a very special person in my life. Some of you actually may know her. A lot here in these chambers, more than you have seen me. She works -- she's the Assistant Executive Director for the Commission for Children, Youth, and Families, and that's my beautiful wife, Rochelle Rios. Without her, it wouldn't have been possible. I want to introduce my mother, Isidra. And my sister Yoli is here somewhere, too. Yolanda? Is my sister Yoli here? There she is.
And finally, I want to say thank you to all of you for coming here to see this special day for us. And we know that here in this country, we live the American dream, but we have to work together to improve education, to improve the opportunities that our young people have got, to improve this city that has a lot to offer to those who are here. They've come here for years, for many years. I want to thank you all. We have a lot of work to do. We have to work together to improve the lives of all of us in this city. Thank you all very, very much. I look forward to serving. We have a lot of work ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I think the first thing that I need to do is thank God for giving us the opportunity to be together on this fantastic day. Yeah, give God a round of applause. I would like to take a moment, if I can, to acknowledge my family that's here with me, my wife Fabian. My son Herb III. My mother Gladys. And my pop Strickland. When I went to college, I didn't have a clue as to what I would want to do with my life, and I had an opportunity to meet a great man by the name of Ron Dellums, former congressperson and who is now running to become the next mayor of Oakland. It was in a short period of time when he came to our college campus and gave a speech about human rights and civil rights that motivated me to want to become a public servant, not an elected official, but a public servant. So for years, I did the best that I could to try to get into this business, and let me say that it was very difficult. But I worked for a councilman named Nate Holden, and back in 1987, my first day as a public servant was in this building. They have a saying that you can never go home again. Well, I think I proved that saying wrong, because coming back, sitting in this seat, is coming home for me, and I'm honored for this opportunity and excited about serving with a friend of mine for years when I was Assemblyman. That's when I first met young Mr. Weezer, and I think he has success written all over his face, and you should all be pleased by the young man that you just elected. Give him and yourselves another round of applause. When I was elected to the California State Assembly, it was a little different. I had some relationships, and I kind of sort of knew people, but the only person that I had a real relationship with when I got there, well, there was three. I had a real relationship with my dear friend and our mayor, Antonio Villarreal, who was Speaker at the House at that time. I had a good friend, a good relationship with Bob Hertzberg, and a good relationship with Carl Washington. But I didn't know anybody else, so I had to get to know them. Coming back to this horseshoe, it's different. Back in 1987, Greg Smith and Tom Labonge and I were kind of young, good-looking guys running around this place. Dennis Zine was a big-time member of the Police Protective League, and he looks exactly the same today as he looked in 1987, which eliminates him from the good-looking. But we had very, very good relationships. I had the opportunity to meet Eric Garcetti through his dad and through his relationship with my son Herb III. Wendy Gruel and I go back to 1987. We've had a relationship when I worked here in the council, went to the county, and went to the state. Janice Han and I were kind of raised together in this business. When I was here in 1987, there was not a councilman, Parks, there was a chief, Parks. When I was Chief Deputy to Supervisor Yvonne Burke, I worked real close with current council member Jan Perry when she was Chief of Staff for Rita Walters. Ed Reyes and I have a new relationship, and I'm excited about it, because I think Ed is the only male member of this council that I can see eye to eye with. Short power. Short power. When I was elected Speaker of the House, I cannot remember being so nervous. And the first interview that I did was with Bill, and he treated me gently and kind, and it was probably one of the best interviews that I had an opportunity to participate in, and I look forward to working with you. Jack Weiss and I have something in common. We share the same treasurer, so I believe coming to this place is not like I'm coming to a new place. Every time Council President Alex Padilla came to Sacramento, he came and paid a courtesy call to me. I served four years with Tony Cardenas, my brother. Two years, he was the caucus chair. Two years, he was the budget chair. I can come home and come home to a place with people that I love, with people that I know, with people that I look forward to working with. We have a lot of great challenges ahead of us, but together, we can do the business that the people of this city elected us to do. We can give them the services that they want, they need, and expect. And we all know, there are going to be critics. People are going to criticize our actions. People are going to criticize what we do. I say to you, my new members, that in all of my days, I have never seen a statue erected for a critic, but to many who they criticize, statues have gone up. So let's do the job. Let's take care of the people of this great city. God bless you, and I'm excited. I'm excited.
We certainly do have a lot of work ahead, and a lot of that work is done within this body, and a lot of the work is done in conjunction with our mayor, Antonio Villarreal. Mr. Mayor.
Well, let me first acknowledge you, Mr. President, and our soon-to-be-president, Eric Garcetti. You know, when you've served on a body, and as I have two years here on the council, the institution is something, as I think Mr. Weston knows full well, something that becomes very important to you. It is not something to go through in terms of a two-year period and not fill a connection with the institution, and I just want to acknowledge the leadership of the Council President, Mr. Padilla, and Mr. Garcetti, and the way this transition is moving so smoothly. It speaks to your leadership, and it also speaks to the interest of this house and this institution, this body we call the City Council, and I think all of you should be recognized for the classy and, I think, smooth way this transition is moving forward. Let me, on another note, let me acknowledge the two new council members. I thought it was going to happen at 10:30, and I was waiting, and all of a sudden they said one of them has already gotten sworn in, so things happen quickly around here, as it should be. Let me just acknowledge Jose Weezer. He's going to be a great addition to this council body. Yeah, you all know him as the president of the school board, but what he didn't say is he is without question that leader on the school board, who really pushed an unprecedented, an unprecedented construction program in a city where we had the biggest, one of the biggest school districts in the United States of America, the most overcrowded, a city where we absolutely have to make our kids a priority, and to have you with the leadership that you bring, with the focus on kids and schools is so important in these times, and this council body is going to benefit from your expertise, your passion, your commitment to kids, and we're very excited. And I tell you, I see another former council member from the 14th Councilmanic District, Art Snyder, and Richard Alatorre, and of course, Nick Pacheco, myself, and when we were looking for somebody to represent this district, it was very clear that he was the right person at the right time, and the fact that you won so overwhelmingly, I think, speaks to the fact people were looking for a young, fresh leader committed to community, committed to our kids, and so I want to acknowledge you as well, Jose Weezer. And of course, Herb Weston, his wife said, as he was speaking, "I raised him well," you know? And I laughed, because I've known Fabian for a long time, and Herb, and I'll tell you something, what you're getting, I mean, think about this, the former Speaker of the California State Assembly, a man who, like Mr. Cardenas, comes with a great deal of experience at the state level in a city that relies so heavily on state and federal funding, and to have a former budget chair, to have the former Speaker of the California State Assembly, two key individuals, as we're moving into this next session, which we hope to be a very beneficial session in terms of investment and infrastructure, in terms of investment and transportation, and in so many of the very important things that LA needs right now. To have a great friend like you on this council body makes me, with two new additions, it makes me want to come back to the council, and then I remember I have a great job. So we'll stay where I'm at, but I'm very excited to have you, Herb, and I think, as I said, we're excited about this council as well. I think all of you, all of you should recognize that this is probably the finest council that LA has ever had, a group of people, idealists, people that want to change the world, people that are committed not just to their small parts of the city, but to the whole city, and I'm very proud to be able to work with all of you, and congratulate the two of you on this new election. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce now the city attorney of the City of Los Angeles, Rocky Dalgadillo.
It's indeed an honor to be here, excuse my voice, to congratulate Jose and Herb for coming to a great body, for Herb for coming back home. I have a special connection to both of them. Herb is now my councilman, so I'm coming to see you about issues I have in the neighborhood. And Jose, many of you might know, was a former deputy city attorney, and I was his boss. So we also have a special connection, but these two gentlemen have demonstrated leadership beyond compare. These two gentlemen have figured out that if you don't quit, if you don't give up, you can save people, and you can save kids, and you can save our future. I believe you're going to see a lot of that coming from the two of them and adding to this August group here. I think all of us will be able to do that, especially with our new mayor and this new leadership. We will be in a place that I don't think Los Angeles has ever seen, and we'll be able to lift her up to a new and better place. Congratulations, welcome.
Let me invite Congresswoman Lucille Royball to say a few words.
Let me just say it is truly an honor to be here for both Jose and for Herb, and as Rocky and our mayor said, that we have some incredible experience here at both local and state level, and I'm looking forward, as the appropriator at the federal level, to working with them and the entire City Council to make sure that the resources that we need to improve the quality of life of residents is, in fact, obtained. As you know, it's going to be extremely difficult, particularly at the federal level, but with the class of leadership, with the expertise, with the experience that every member of this City Council has, together with our state elected officials, I'm extremely confident that together we are going to be a force, that is going to be beatable, not only for the City of Los Angeles, but for the State of California, and I'm forward to working towards that goal.
And let me acknowledge the president of our former city controller, Rick Tyler. Thank you, Rick, for being here. And Mr. Weezer and Mr. Weston, so you can quickly learn what it's like around the horseshoe. I must now recognize Councilmember Labonge.
I just wanted to welcome them. This is a great day for Los Angeles. Jose and your beautiful wife and family, what a great team to help, because it's family, as Herb, your beautiful wife and family, and family gives us so much support, and I know we just passed Thanksgiving holiday, which is, I think, the greatest American holiday, when we give thanks, and then as usual, the work that we need to do, and as the mayor spoke, and as our city attorney spoke, and as our great Congresswoman spoke as far as the team, and what we could do to help the great people of Los Angeles, so I just personally wanted to welcome you here, and it's great to see, I'm sorry about the Cleveland Browns, Herb, I know you're a great fan of the Cleveland Browns, if all of you don't know that, but they have a little trouble, but Jose, it's great to have you as a seatmate, and to learn and help the people of Los Angeles, because this is a great city, and we've got to stand tall and help the people believe in it and work hard for all that is good about a great city as Los Angeles, which next year will celebrate its 225th birthday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. I know our mayor introduced Councilmember Snyder, and I've seen his hand, two copies of a great, great book that I was privy to receive back in 1999, Fifteen Rules for the Fifteen. Thank you for being here, thank you for delivering those copies. And if there's nothing further at this time, let's get to work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We're starting on the agenda, item number one, it's an item notice for public hearing at the street location in Council District 13, and Councilmember Garcetti's request continues to January 31, 2006.
Okay, members, an objection to continuing item number one? Seeing none? Item one is continued. Next item, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 2 through 12. Item two is a confirmation of the city official duty to hold on the desk.
Let's hold off commissioners on the desk. Colleagues, items 2 through 12 are now before us. These items have had public hearings in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings, and if there's no -- specials, Mr. Parks. Number four, for a call special by Mr. Parks.
Your president just presented, but the council know on item number 12, there are two reports on the file, and a motion is required. They do conflict.
Okay, if there's no motion on item 12 at this time, let's call that special, as we await a motion. Next items, please.
That would leave before council items 3 through 11, and a committee report has been submitted on item number nine.
Okay, on the bounce of the items, Ms. Gruel. Okay, on the balance of the items, Ms. Grull.
Could we continue item 11 for two weeks?
Okay, an objection to continuing item number 11. Seeing none, item 11 is continued. Before I move forward, members of the audience who are making their way out, if we can ask you to please keep it down a little bit, so we can get through the items on our agenda. We'd appreciate that. Thank you. We have items 3, 5 through 10 still before us. Ms. Rosendahl?
Number nine.
Number nine, call special by Mr. Rosendahl. Any other specials? Seeing none on the balance of the items. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, 13 through 38. Item 13 is a confirmation, and 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's hold 13 on the desk. That's a commission confirmation item. Items 14 through 38 now before us.
Mr. President, item 33 special.
Okay, item 33, call special by Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, 35?
Yes, that's going to be called special. Okay, let me, folks, before any of the other specials, at least acknowledge that we do not have speaker cards on the balance of the items. Public hearings are opened and closed. Any additional specials on these items?
Ms. President, there is a request, I believe, on item number 34 to continue that matter for one day, and that's from Councilmember Garcetti.
Okay, any objection to continuing item 34? Seeing none. Item 34 is continued. Any other specials? Seeing none. We do have items 13, 33, and 35 called special on the balance of the items. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Those are approved. Item 22 and 23 had previously been approved. Let's send those items forthwith, please. Next items.
Next items on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not have been held, 39 through 46. Item 39 is also a commissioner. Do we should hold that?
I believe Ms. Perry calls item 39 special.
39, yes, thank you.
And Ms. Hahn?
Yes, may I have 41 through 46 special, please?
Okay. And those should all be considered concurrently, items 41 through 46. Colleagues, leaving item number 40 before us. Any desire to call this item special? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on item 40, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items on the supplemental agenda, 47 through 49, are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes for consideration.
Okay, without objection, items 47 through 49 are before the city council today. And I do not have speaker cards on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request to call these items special, 47, 48, and 49. Seeing none. Let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, item 49 is approved. 47 and 48 contain ordinances and carry over for... Oh, we have 14 members. Those are approved on first reading. Not used to having 15 members a year. Next item, please.
Mr. President, do we should take a public comment at this time on items not on council's agenda?
Before we do that, we do want to take item 35 out of order. If I can ask the sergeants to please help us either keep the noise down, the volume down, or escort those members of the audience wishing to leave council chambers out of council chambers. It's getting a little loud in here. Sergeants, for all the folks gathered in the back, if they'd like to stay inside our meeting, they're more than welcome to, but we need them to keep it down just a little bit if they're making their way out. Please help them a little bit. Ms. Grull?
Number 24 to be called, excuse me, to be sent forthwith.
Okay, forthwith on item 24, please. Mr. Labange?
On item number 35?
It's been called special. Let's, while folks are making their way out of council chambers, move to general public comment for today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. And we call forward at this time Martin Rubin, followed by Esther Lofton and Candido Maris. Would you please come forward? This is general public comment for today's meeting. Go ahead.
Martin Rubin, West Los Angeles, Council District 11. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the, arguably, the greatest city council that the city has ever had, according to the mayor. I want to speak about something which I'm sure all the council members are quite aware of. Throughout the city, many residents are not happy with the quality of life that has been brought on by overdevelopment that has stressed the infrastructure, so many of the infrastructures of the city. Traffic jams getting around, the air pollution that's caused by the traffic jams. And this problem is bordering on a nightmare as development continues, continues to grow at an alarming pace, further stressing the infrastructures before the transportation is brought in and before there are problems, the problems are, there are solutions for the problems. And I would hope that this great city council can do everything to turn this around. I know the mayor ran in his campaign, and our great city councilman, Bill Rosendahl, wants to make these changes so that everyone who lives in Los Angeles can enjoy a better quality of life. Thank you for the time.
Good morning. My name is Esther Lofton. I'm a resident of the 10th District. And I have written Mr. Wesson, who's my city councilman, I wrote him as city councilman-elect, certified male since November the 8th of 2005, and I haven't received a word, an answer from him, or a response of any kind or any type. Now, I believe that this form of government is, exists to protect the civil rights or the inalienable rights of its citizens. And if you come to your city councilman to request his support or his help to do that, he doesn't even respond. And this is my problem. I'd like to get a response from Mr. Wesson as soon as possible. There's nothing more urgent than the inalienable rights, and that's what I thought his job was about. And unless he's ready to improve the quality of my life by enforcing the rights, I don't think he can do it for anyone in the 10th District.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Esther, was that Esther Lofton? That was Ms. Lofton? Okay. Candida, yes?
Just want to say, I know there's a representative from Council District 10, ma'am, and I'm sure that they'll be willing to speak with you, so we'll make sure that we connect right now. Thank you.
Next speaker is Candido Merez, followed by Lisa Martelaro Palmer.
Good morning, Madam President. To our new council members, congratulations. They talked about some great events, some great things that took place in their lives. They were called opportunities, and opportunities should be given to everyone in this city. There was an article in the Today's Paper which stated, "LA is singing inner-city jobs, isn't singing inner-city jobs." Why? Because of you, council members. You guys are doing a fantastic job to make sure that we keep jobs in this city, that we make opportunities available to small businesses. Mr. Garcetti, congratulations on your new position. I know you're going to do well. You started the Small Local Business Advisory Committee with Ms. Grull. We're going to take that as far as we can, sir. It's about opportunity. On the back page of that, it stated, "The reason why was because..." It stated that because when clusters of businesses that support one another, that they're working together, that they can actually cause a positive effect. I'm asking you, tomorrow, before the Energy and Commerce Committee, a contract will go before them for tools, abrasives, anchors, and epoxy. $2.1 million that's going to be taken away from small businesses in each and every one of your districts, and it'll be given to one sole source. That one sole source does not give one opportunity to one minority business, to one women-owned business, and that cannot be allowed to take place. So, I ask you to please ask those questions. And Mr. Cardenas, we look forward to having this issue before your committee tomorrow in the Energy and Commerce Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Ms. Palmer, be followed by Faustino Pepping Baklig.
Good morning, council members. My name is Lisa Martelaro Palmer, and many of you may know me from interviewing you for my master's, my master's in public administration on leadership. I am one of the Transportation Engineering Associates in the Department of Transportation, and I stand before you today to discuss the battle that exists between the executive committee, which is made up of the council president, the chief administrative officer, and some other members, and our EAA union. I am not here today to negotiate terms, but rather to offer a personal testimony of what it is like to be an engineer in one of the city departments. Personally, I attended Cal State Northridge for my Bachelor of Science and Master's in public administration. After graduating engineering school, some of my classmates went to private industry, and some of us went into public service. Some of us went to DWP, and some of us went into other departments. I myself went into transportation. However, there were no extra qualifications to become a member of DWP. It was merely a different department. All of us had the same education. As an employee of the city of Los Angeles, we are recognized as a member of a city family. Each member and each department is unique and important. As a matter of fact, it is the engineers in these departments that provide the day-to-day services for the public and to each of your council offices. We are the ones that rebuild the roads, stripe them, and provide signal timing. To favor one department over another would be short-sighted. Without these engineers and technicians, these services could not be provided to the citizens of Los Angeles. It would be analogous to having a schoolroom with books and no teachers. We all need qualified engineers to help provide the services we use every day. We are even part of a bigger family. We are all Angelinos. When our mayor was inaugurated, he said, "Citizens of Los Angeles, dream with me." Well, I'm hoping that the mayor, the chief administrative officer, and our new council president will be able to work with us and allow us to be a part of that dream. Please open discussions with our EAA representatives, Michael Davies, president, and executive director Robert Aquino. This union is on fire, and it will not rest until victory and justice have been secured. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Faustino here? If not, we'll...
Distinguished members of the council, I am Pepping Baklig, a World War II veteran, and I belong to the historic Filipino town. About 40 years ago, I stood again here, agitating, advocating for the establishment of a historic Filipino town. I came here 20 years ago, and I did not seek for any work, any office, because I was in the community, and I committed myself to the empowerment of the Filipino-American group in this community. My dear friends, I was so shocked that like the World War II veterans who until now are not recognized as American veterans, to find out that one of our community leaders was east out from her office when she failed to gain another position by running to, running to another office. Unluckily, she lost, but after the battle, she found herself without any office, any work. I asked this council, "Is it a sin to run for a seat in the government? Don't you not allow your subordinates to go ahead or to go out with you, serving the community?" It's unlike what I have suffered. My dear friends, I don't like to put this young lady in the same suffering that I had. I'm referring to Robi De Vera, who was an administrator of one of the offices of this council, and she ran to serve her community, but when she lost, she found herself jobless. She had been in the government service for quite a number of years. She has a disabled son, daughter, and now he has no way of serving her family, and she has no way of serving the community. Is that the way we serve those who serve us? If she had done something against her boss, is that a sense, is that enough for her to become jobless? Did she commit anything against the law? Did she commit anything to serve, to deserve that treatment? I asked the compassion of this honorable council to consider her case, and if, if she gets your heart, then maybe I will not ask for more in this council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I asked this compassionate council to reconsider her case. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I think the public comment is now closed. Can we go to the next order of business?
Did council wish to take up item number 35 at this time? And that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, I think, and then follow by Mr. Padilla, first.
I want to follow Mr. Padilla, the president. Mr. Padilla.
Council President Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, as is clear this morning, it's a big day here in City Hall, a big day in the history of the city of Los Angeles, as we welcome two new members of the city council that have continued this transition and a little bit of turnover here in this post-Term of an era of our city government. For the last nearly four and a half years, I've had a tremendous honor to serve you as your president. And what a tremendous four and a half years it's been. It's been four and a half years of learning, of growing, of leading, and of really growth for me personally. I was reflecting on it this morning, over the last six and a half years that I've been on the council. Colleagues, I've had the chance to serve now with three different mayors, two city attorneys, two controllers, and 30 members of this city council, 30 council members. And for those of you who were here in 2001, when I first put my candidacy forward to serve as president of the city council, a big part of that reason was because of this transition the council was going to be going through. When I was elected in 1999, I was the new guy around here. And just a few short years later, I'm the senior member of the city council, and it was important to me to try to provide some continuity and stability through this period of transition. And despite, you know, in addition to the numbers of elected officials that are working their way through the city family, I think over the last four and a half years specifically, we've done a tremendous job. The last four and a half years, this council has taken a lead on the creation of an education... education and neighborhoods committee, following up on our city charter, but also being a little bit forward-thinking on the issue of education in Los Angeles. We created this education commission to look at LAUSD governance in partnership with our school district. On an ad hoc basis, we've created committees like the Ad Hoc Committee on the LA River, which Ed Reyes has a great, great leader and champion, the Ad Hoc Committee on Gangs and Youth Development, the Ad Hoc Committee on Renewing LA, looking at the future of solid waste in the City of Los Angeles, and soon to be created Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness, looking at another very contemporary issue. We have placed on the ballot as a council measures like Prop Q, that has funded the construction of police stations throughout the city, Measure O, pioneering $500 million bond for our water infrastructure and improvements of water quality. We defeated secession by working together. We have lived through some great budget times and some very challenging budget times, and we made it through 9/11, one of the scariest moments in our country's history when there was questions all around as to what the attacks that morning meant for the City of Los Angeles. Colleagues, I've done my best to serve this council and the city as your council president. All of you are very well aware that I'm now, I'm now off into my next venture in my career and in my life, as I have announced my candidacy for higher office. And I think it's only appropriate, I think it's best for this city council that you continue to keep a president that can dedicate the appropriate time, energy, attention to serving this body. Come January 1st, I can no longer do that, and I'm proud to say that as I move to remove myself as president of the council, that in the same breath, I nominate to be the next council president, not just our colleague, but my friend, Eric Garcetti. Eric, who, when he announced his candidacy for city council, I was quick to support and endorse. Eric, who, when I had the bold and crazy idea of considering serving this council as president, he was the first to support. And I was reflecting, just a few days ago, on some old records in our office, and Eric, I think you'll remember the picture of the LA Times the day after I was elected president of the council. And yes, there was a story about this council in the transition, but the picture itself was me hunting one individual, and that was you. So I can't think of anybody better to nominate for this city council to take my place as president of this body than Councilmember Eric Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and to President Alex Padilla, thank you for your words, what you spoke of, and the challenges that this body faces, but also your leadership in having to serve at this time, in this very critical time. I want to personally thank you as a member of this council, and also as a former staff member of a president of the city council, whose chambers are named for John Farrow. It's a very difficult job, and I believe John Farrow said it best once, it's like herding sheep sometimes, as being the... No, it was cats. It was cats. Yeah, it's cats. I think of the... I met someone from New Zealand yesterday, that's why I got sheep on my mind. But herding cats, herding cats. But anyway, with that in mind, Madam President, could we have a voice vote for this item here and ask that all members who are in the chambers...
We can do that, and I think Mr. Martinez is going to do that for us.
Is Mr. Martinez...
Yes.
Since the motion before you has two parts, I think we should split it, and the first order is the motion of removal, and Madam Clerk, if you would, could we open the roll? Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Now before us is the second part of the motion, the election of the president. The nomination has been made of Mr. Eric Garcetti, and in accordance with rules 1 and 3, unless I hear an objection, we will do a voice vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Ms. Gruel.
Mr. Garcetti.
Ms. Hahn.
I cast my vote for the next president of the city council, Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Labonge.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Padilla.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Parks.
Eric Garcetti.
Ms. Perry.
Mr. Reyes.
Garcetti.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Eric Garcetti.
Mr. Weiss.
Mr. Wesson.
Mr. Zine.
How many votes does he need? Garcetti.
And that passes. Congratulations. that I can remember, where there's two new members with extraordinary skills, extraordinary experience, and extraordinary character that have joined this. And whenever, I think all of us know, whenever there's a member or two that's missing, we feel like an incomplete body, and to have 15 members again here all sitting makes us whole. I know that all of you share the feeling that I have when I come to work each morning, which is I can't believe that I'm here in this place, which is literally a temple of democracy, a place in which, if you want to taste democracy at its best and its most immediate, it's right there, right in front of us. You can't run, you can't hide, and you have to engage with it, through the difficult pieces of democracy, as well as the ones that are more glorious. This city council is filled with such tremendous skill and background that to be a part of this august body has been the greatest honor of my life for the last four years. But the trust which you are placing in my hands today to help you with your agendas, which is how I see my job here, is how I can promote 14 people's agenda and work with our mayor to move this city forward, is how I view my time as your president. I want to thank especially Wendy Gruel, our president pro tem, for her support, and really looking forward to working with her as part of a leadership team. And for those of you who are at my square again, you'll forgive me for taking the metaphor one more time, but I always like going back in history like Tom Labonge does, to when Father Juan Crespi, you know, as we talked about in the River Committee, bathed in the rivers of a waterway he then named Los Angeles. That's where we got our name from. And he wrote in his diary that evening that one day here in Los Angeles, a great mission would be built. Well, unlike most other places where missions were settled here in California, Los Angeles never had a mission, unlike San Gabriel and Santa Barbara and other places. But as you look at the 14 pillars that are around this place, this is that mission, that incomplete idea that one day, that civic enterprise, and 44 pobladores who came here, white, black, brown, Asian, to plant that seed, has flourished into this incredible flower. But let's make no mistake as well, that people feel alienated from their city, and they feel alienated from their government, but all of us have the power to change that, and I've seen that change, just in four years, whether it's people fighting for social justice like Jan Perry and Ed Reyes, Bill Rosendahl, Janice Hahn, people who want greater accountability, Tony Cardenas, Wendy Gruel, steering us through incredibly difficult budget times with Mr. Parks, people who just have an ebullient love of Los Angeles like Mr. Labonge, and reminds us, our two new members, folks who are concerned with security and safe neighborhoods in a secure city like Mr. Weiss and Mr. Zine. I think each one of the members here loves this city in their bones, and I hope that I can just try to amplify that, try to radiate that, make this internal body continue to run even better and better each day, but more importantly, to get the people's business done. And I want to say my last words from Mr. Padilla, because the last four years, you set the standard. Nobody could have imagined, as you went through that laundry list of 9/11, of Prop 1A, so we could finally have some security with our own budget, of looking at the things that we went through with secession, where the city literally could have been ripped apart into three other cities. The steady stewardship and the leadership that you have set is an example for me as I move forward, and I want to thank you for your friendship and for your leadership, and all of you, for the conversations that we had in moving this forward in a way that's good for the body. Christopher once said, when he was Secretary of State, and people said when he was not going to be there for a second term in the Clinton administration, they said, "Are you disappointed about not being Secretary of State again?" He said, "If I were to be disappointed, it would imply that somehow this was my office," when in fact, we are just stewards for the public. We occupy these seats for an amazing time, a time that none of us will ever forget in our own lives, but while we're here, we have a mission, a mission that Father Juan Crespi set out for us a long time ago, and which I know we're a step closer to completing today. So thank you all very, very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number two, and that's confirmation of Ms. Yolanda Vera to the Board of Civil Service Commissioners.
Okay, Ms. Vera, we'll go forward at this time. Colleagues, item number two now before us. We do have a committee report recommending confirmation, members wishing to speak, beginning with Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, almost afternoon. We've interviewed, you meet the qualifications, you've got the desire, the interest to carry out this responsibility, the significance of this responsibility when it comes to people's careers, job placement, discipline, et cetera, within the Civil Service Commission, so I would recommend approval. I think our nominee has all the qualifications to aspire to the job on the Civil Service Commission. Thank you.
Are the members wishing to speak on item number two? Seeing now, let's open the roll and confirmation, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. Before we proceed to the next item, Mr. Cardenas for an introduction.
Yes, I'd like to welcome to these council chambers, former state assembly member and now county supervisor in Orange County is Lou Correa. Lou Correa is here with us.
Welcome, Mr. Correa. Madam Clerk, I believe we have another commission nominee or two?
Yes, that's item number 13, and that's confirmation of Ms. Tyree Wyder to the Board of Library Commissioners and Arts Parks Committee, weighed consideration of this matter.
Okay, Ms. Vera, we can go forward at this time. Colleagues, item 13 now before us. Members wishing to speak, beginning with Ms. Gruel.
You pushed your button first, Madam Chair of the committee.
The button doesn't work. Did you trick it when I moved seats, Alex? Thank you, Mr. President. Committee strong support for this wonderful nominee from Mayor Villarosa. This would be a great addition to the library department, which absolutely had a very great story in the Los Angeles Times this past weekend. It made me feel proud about our librarian, present librarian, our past librarian, and the librarian staff, all the people in that. I just am pleased as committee chair to say that you're a great nominee and look forward to your work. You're going to add great value as a president of one of the great community colleges in the country, as a special college in our community. Doctor, you're going to do a great job, and I just wanted to thank you for... And ask you, do you remember your library as a child? And do you remember your favorite book as a child?
Do you want to know? It was The Poky Little Puppy.
Poky Little Puppy. And where was your local library as a child?
The local library was about two blocks from my house in South Los Angeles.
So you remember the branch?
Oh, I don't remember the name of it then. It was just when I walked in.
Good job. I know, I remember. It's just, it's great, and I just, I just put a plug in for Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel. That was my favorite. So yours was Poky?
The Poky Little Puppy.
The Poky Little Puppy. Good job. Doctor, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of Tyree Wyder. We had the pleasure this morning to have breakfast talk. She's my appointee to the Commission on the Review of Governance for the LA Unified School District, but I've known Tyree for a very long time, and her leadership on, as head of Valley College, but she's much more than just the president of Valley College. She is involved in everything, and I think, told me she hesitated for a moment when the mayor's office called her and asked her if she would be on, I think, I don't think they said, "And will you be president?" I think they said, "Would you be on the library commission?" But pleased, as he said today to you, Madam President, that you are going to be a wonderful addition because of, because of your connections and your knowledge base of education, the importance of reading and our libraries, but most importantly, as you discussed this morning, which was the connection between our schools, our community colleges, and the City of Los Angeles. And as someone who, my son got his library card at a year old and goes once a week, we had to kind of teach him that he couldn't keep the books, that he needed to share them and give them back and forth. He's learned that, but that's one of the exciting things that I think all children enjoy, and our libraries are a precious resource, so we are going to depend upon you and our wonderful general manager Fontaine to ensure that our libraries continue to grow and to become those centers of learning and the connections with organizations such as Valley College and others. So I just stand in wholehearted support of Tyree's nomination today and confirmation, and I'm sure it will happen. Congratulations, Tyree.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Just recently, I attended a conference. The focus was the digital divide, a particular panel that was on. And what's striking to me is that, I believe we have an incredible opportunity looking at where our libraries are situated, especially in the older parts of the city. But I want to get from you your perspective on how do we address this digital divide using the libraries as a focal point, and what programs you can see coming, given your stewardship as a commissioner. Do you have some thoughts on that thing?
Absolutely. Many of the young people and older people in our city absolutely need the resources of the library, and many of them don't have resources in terms of the kind of equipment and support services that our library have. They don't have it at home, and so the library becomes a focal course for students to go to, especially young folks that can connect with what they need to do at their schools, things the schools can't provide, our libraries can provide for them, and it should be partnered with what they're doing in their educational programs at the local schools. And not only for our young folks, for many of our returning adults, we have a lot of illiterate adults in the city, and we have a major problem with literacy, and I think the libraries can be very, very supportive and helping with that. There are a lot of software programs that some of our adults can use in terms of adult literacy and gaining skills in those areas, so that they'd be better prepared for the workforce, and I think the libraries will be central to both of those groups of people.
We have industries right now that are moving in a direction where they're taking control of how we communicate with each other. We've got the cable companies, we've got all these other companies that are emerging that will be making quite a bit of money, if you will, given the level of activity that's out there. I would hope as commissioner, we could find ways to engage these companies, these industries, to give back, because they will be making money off of our pockets, out of our citizens, out of our population. So how they give back, how they educate, how they inform, how they create accessibility to the services, from the private sector, I believe, is an incredible opportunity in these days. So if you could at least look at those opportunities, those options, and figure out how we can leverage what power we have as a city, when we license companies, when we give them those opportunities to make that kind of money. You have an incredible infrastructure we can work with, hope we can build up on that, and in the future, see those types of ideas in which we can implement new policies that allow us to leverage their resources, since they do benefit from our communities, and look at libraries as potential beneficiaries of those types of processes.
Absolutely, and I believe that those vendors have an obligation, not only to provide purchasing for us in terms of the city, but also to provide educational opportunities and some training that go with that, and so that they're not just selling things to us, but that they're partners in making better use of the equipment that they're giving to us.
Well, I can look to my office in any way to support you, should there be language or policy direction that allows us to get there, I'd be more than happy to support you on that.
Thank you very much. I'll be looking forward to talking with you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. It's good to see you here.
Thank you.
You are a lady of about town. You get involved in many projects in all parts of the San Fernando Valley. I don't know about other regions, but I know you're actively involved... I don't know about other regions, but I know you're actively involved in everything in San Fernando Valley. Your leadership at LA Valley College, your inspiration, your desire to improve and constantly improve, and to have that level of education, to give people the opportunity to pursue a career, and I, you know where I started, back there in the mid-sixties, and I know that renovations taking place at the college under your guidance, under your leadership. A wonderful person, a wonderful nominee by the mayor's office for this very important position. Without education, they're not going to pursue. I stopped by the Works Source Center this morning over on Van Owen in Canoga Park, and I noticed they had a little library there, they have computers, and people were trying to establish, in fact, you had representatives there.
Yes, we did.
Marty Cooper was leading a program, and the gentleman's name...
Lenny Shufa, Art Class Program.
He was there, they had about thirty-some people listening to the conversation and how to market the different enterprises, the representatives that were there. But your inspiration is well-known in the community, and I know that your desire to always help people advance, to achieve the success that they, they dream about, is always there. So, obviously, highest recommendation. I'm glad to see that you're going to be joining this commission, because it falls right in line with your desires to help everyone, whether it's a young student wants to be a police officer, or someone who wants to pursue other careers in life. So, God bless you, and thank you for volunteering for another important function to help people in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. I look forward to working with your office as well.
Absolutely. Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Are the members of the council wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's open the roll in confirmation, close the roll, and tie the vote.
14-9.
That is approved. Please.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item number 39 is also Commissioner, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a few minutes to put on the record something that occurred last night, which I, I think is worth noting. Last night, I was joined by Mr. Padilla yourself, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labond, Ms. Han, and Ms. Gruel. I don't think I missed anybody, did I? I think that's it. I think we got everybody. Members of Central City East, the Midnight Mission, the BID for the area, and I wanted to thank my council colleagues who joined me last night in the dark on Skid Row for a walking tour, and I wanted to tell all of you publicly on the record that I am deeply grateful that you took the time to do this with me. And I want to reinforce what I've said about the LASSA Commission, about the Justin litigation, and for those of you who may not remember, Justin litigation was the lawsuit brought against the city, which prevented our ability to enforce Code Section 4118, subsection D, in taking encampments off of sidewalks and compelling people to go in for treatment. I just wanted to say publicly, and I, I don't know what conclusions some of you may have reached after walking through Skid Row last night, but what 4118 has done to Central City East and Skid Row has affected, deeply affected our ability to engage people who are living in encampments, and in many cases, 4118 was a positive tool to engage people, to protect them, and to pull them into services sooner. And as you can see, without that leverage, the number of encampments on Skid Row has grown enormously. This morning, I was fortunate enough to visit with seventy-five formerly homeless people, all suffering from co-occurring disorders. Many were homeless for as long as fifteen years and living on the street. A federal grant, a partnership with the Workforce Investment, the LA Housing Authority, and goodwill, and many health, mental health service providers have given these folks a new start. Many were taken from the year-round shelter in Council District Nine and given this opportunity to recover their lives. Some of them have children and have reunited with their families. I just want to tell you again, as, to my colleagues, none of this is personal. All of these nominees that have come before us are wonderful people, and I think that you've seen my vote, ninety-nine percent of the time, I always vote affirmatively. But as you can see last night, the constituents who I serve, in many cases, is a matter of life and death. I believe and still do, and will continue to fight for and join with the County of Los Angeles to make sure that we have people who have policy and planning experience with respect to the homeless, grant-seeking capability based on knowing who can deliver services that chronically ill homeless people need, and someone who has the legislative capacity to bring all branches of government together to address this crisis, individuals who have resources for housing and recovery services, all with a mission and a passion to prioritize funding for the homeless and to work towards a goal of preventing it. If we do not do this, I believe that the situation that some of you saw last night will continue and get worse. This is not personal. Again, I believe that all the appointees who have come before us are extremely well-intentioned and do deeply care about this issue. At this point in time, I believe that we need to take a new direction to redirect the agency, to better fund it, and to have a LASSA Commission that truly reflects what we need to begin to address this homeless crisis here in our city and county.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank my colleague, Jan Perry, for inviting us to tour an area in this great city that is truly an outrage for all of us. Seeing homeless people in encampments, a sense of, of loss and, and powerlessness was evident in the tour. But what it does point out, Mr. President, as you said in your remarks earlier, to form this ad hoc committee on homelessness is a must for this great city. We need to look at Prop 63 funds that are there for the mentally ill, and we need to get those monies into the city so we can build assisted living housing with social services attached to it. These people need help, and we need to take those funds and do it. If anything, it illustrated to us on the council last night that action must be taken and must be taken now. So, I look forward to this committee being formed, where we can literally get the resources in place and we can deal with the homeless issue. We need to set up a plan with a timetable and a schedule that actually deals with it. I do not want to walk down Skid Row again and again and again and see the situation that is there now. And thank you, Jan, again, for taking us along with you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Jan, you were out working the area. I was doing my reserve duty with LAPD, and sadly, we have to venture into that area many evenings in arresting felons who are finding that location a nice hiding place. And I know that the commitment that Councilmember Perry has to the people of Los Angeles and to give the people on Skid Row an opportunity, and I was down there Thanksgiving at the mission, feeding those during the Thanksgiving holiday and seeing the sad faces of the children. There's so much crime that goes unreported in that area, and so much neglect that takes place in that area, and I commend Councilmember Perry for her leadership. It's been neglected for many, many years, and when the police officers of Central are not permitted to go out there and do the job to make it a public place of safety for everyone, we all suffer the consequences. So, I will join you in your opposition on this, and also in your support of having a remedy come about, because all it does is breed the negativity of the city of Los Angeles, and if we don't check it now, it will spread to other districts. It will spread to districts on the west side, it will spread to districts in the south, and it will be like a cancer, and it's getting worse. It's not getting better, and we need to address it and address it vigorously, and have people on the commission that are sensitive, and let the police do what they need to do, and the social service departments need to do what they need to do to remedy the situation. I support you in your efforts any way possible, and I know from the police department that assets that are expended are a tremendous cost to the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles.
Ms. Perry.
One, one more comment I wanted to make. We will be, for those council members who were not able to come Monday night, and I know Mr. Weiss was very interested in doing this, we'll be walking again this coming Wednesday evening at 6:30 on Sixth Street in front of the Midnight Mission. One of the reasons I, I chose to do this is because oftentimes, we have to make votes in a vacuum, and we may not understand the context in which we're voting, because we may not understand how it affects us. I wanted, wanted people to see this, feel it, smell it, be affected by it, hear people screaming at them, see people living on the street, so that when you vote, you understand what your vote means. Now, people choose to vote a certain way for any number of reasons, and it may not always be apparent to those watching or those observing. You know, we're in politics, that's just the way it is. I think some of you may notice that I haven't actually come up to some of you and said, "I need your vote on this, I need your vote on this." The reason that I didn't do that is because I believe that the story can tell itself. All you need to do is be out there after dark and let it wash over you, and I think that you can reach your own conclusions. We don't exist in a vacuum. Every action we take, whether it's voting for a lawsuit settlement, approving a nominee, arguing for a piece of legislation, everything always has a connection, everything always has a domino effect. I'm very comfortable where I am, because as you see, these are the people that I serve. And so, I, I say to you, I hope that what you did last night affected you in some way, and I hope that no matter how you vote, that it causes you to remember, to remember the yelling, the screaming, the smells, the things on the street, the people in the encampments, who we have no leverage to get up off of the sidewalk at this point legally, and they will remain there as long as the sidewalk is clear. I hope that you will remember that, and I would like to believe that what we did last night has had some effect on you, no matter how you vote today. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
I think it's important for us to acknowledge, as some, some of us have already just acknowledged Jan Perry's commitment and passion and compassion to the homeless people who end up in her district. If you don't mind, Ms. Perry, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions with permission of the Chair, President Padilla. The people who are on Skid Row, the people who are homeless in and around downtown your district, did they all start there, or they kind of ended up there?
As, as you well know, many, many of, many of the individuals have been delivered there, not only through our criminal justice system, but now, recent disclosures indicate, from hospitals, they often get taken there, driven there, migrate there because of the high level of concentration of social services in the area and the failure of other municipalities and other parts of the city to locate social services in their respective council districts or cities.
Thank you. One thing that I'd like to point out, in my personal opinion, is the ACLU has brought lawsuits against the city of Los Angeles, and they brought to bear some consequences on the city that, in, in my opinion, and was expressed in these chambers several times over this debate over who's going to sit on the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, is the fact that they've really made it much more difficult, in some cases, almost impossible, to really remedy some longer-term solutions for these individuals that the ACLU cares very much about, and we all care about. But the fact of the matter is, do you think, Ms. Perry, that the ACLU could probably be more systematic and symptomatic about solving this by perhaps bringing a lawsuit against cities and authorities who concentrate these people into one area instead of taking their personal responsibility seriously enough and saying, "Wait a minute, County of so-and-so, City of so-and-so, where you have your elected bodies and your authorities, and your ability to dedicate your time and energy to these people, don't they have an opportunity to actually bring lawsuits against them for, for doing these kinds of actions?" And some of those actions are pretty blatant.
I would say that the most narrow issue on which a lawsuit could be based would be the failure to fulfill the requirement of a housing element. I can, I already have a list of all the municipalities who have chosen, proactively chosen not to locate emergency shelter beds or transitional beds in their own municipalities. And I would even say, among some of my own colleagues, there are council districts in this city of Los Angeles that do not have emergency beds or shelter beds, because they have proactively chosen not to locate them there because of the political controversy and the firestorm that it generates. So, it's been a proactive political decision not to do that. That may be something the ACLU could look at. I think one of the things that actually brought tears to my eyes, and I don't need to name names, but when I was escorting one of the individuals through Skid Row, and we were talking about the lawsuit, it was one of the nominees, and the, the individual indicated that the individual had never been down there at night, and I said, "Well, you know, before you, you know, file a lawsuit, wouldn't you do the field outreach to kind of test your own hypotheses, you know, to get a better sense of that?" And I, I was, I was surprised to hear that, and sad, very sad, because the unintended consequence of that is, you know, creating a, a living hell, which exists every single night. Last night was a quiet night, and I think if you talked to some of the people who were there, they, they saw some pretty horrible things.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Even on a quiet night, it's a very telling night. It's a very telling story of a real story about people living and breathing and bleeding, literally on the streets of Los Angeles, who need those services, who really need all of us, including the ACLU, the City Council, the mayor, and everyone involved, the county, the state, the federal government, to address this very real American issue. But one thing that I'd like to compliment you once again, Ms. Perry, is that you've been extremely respectful, as passionate as you are on this. You're not naming names, you're not attacking individuals, you're sticking to the issue at hand, and the issue is about the compassion and respect for human beings and trying to figure out long-term real solutions for today and for a long time to come. And that's one of the reasons why I've been listening to this debate, listening to who we appoint, because what we don't need, in my opinion, we do not need philosophers on this commission. We need people who can really smell it, feel it, touch it, and try to create solutions, and really, not point fingers, but put their arms around the problem and create real solutions, and not worry about the politics of who they offend or what neighborhoods they can avoid to have to deal with, and only deal with certain neighborhoods because they don't speak up, or they don't speak to them. So, those are the issues that are coming to my mind as we deliberate these very important appointments, and one thing that I'd like to point out is, it's time that the ACLU look at this and realize that perhaps, they may feel strongly about certain losses that they brought to bear on the city of Los Angeles, but they need to be the real organization that looks at the entire issue and bring lawsuits, or whatever mechanisms they want to engage in, in the right places and the right ways for looking at real solutions, and not just pointing fingers and toasting to themselves that they actually won a lawsuit, but really didn't solve a problem.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and I just want to respond to that. Last night, we also walked over into the fourteenth district on Gladys and ended up over in front of Padre Los Niños, and I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Huizar on this. Padre Los Niños is an after-school program for the young people from all over the city, but predominantly, the kids come from the Skid Row area, South LA and East Los Angeles. And one of the officers from Central, Officer McInerney, along with Estela Lopez, spoke to the group last night about the drug dealing, hypodermic needles, condoms, the presence of dope smoking in front of these children right outside the gate of their play area, and it's no man's land over there. It's the DMZ, the demilitarized zone. Officer McInerney had to get on top of her patrol car to basically tell all the dealers over there, you know, "These are children, you know, what adults do to each other is one thing, you need to leave these kids alone, and back off of this block and leave these kids alone." It hasn't solved the problem. The encampments are still there. The dealing is just on the other block, it's still there, but it's away from the play area, but these are the conditions under which we have to operate. This is not about me trying to flex my muscles, this is about me trying to convey, in a very real sense, what these children have to live with every day, not just in the ninth, but also in the fourteenth. And all I can say is, I do truly hope that what you saw last night has a lasting impact on what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Labond.
Thank you very much. Members, thank you, Jan Perry, for inviting me to come with you and our colleagues to walk there last night. I am going to vote for the mayor's nominee, because I believe it's up to the mayor to make the judgment on who should serve. But on the question about the nominee, I think it's absolutely great to try to get people who may not agree with how I feel, I, I don't feel that the way that the American Civil Liberties Union has articulated this discussion, and maybe that individual with that background could come and see it in a better light, maybe that individual could do what you have tried to do and help in that direction there. I think it's good to get a mix, and I also say too, if we feel, and I think the mayor's office has worked with, we feel that people who have appointed to the commission don't see the problem as it should be seen, then there's... then there's action that could be taken in the future. But I think this man has said, "I want to serve." He has been reviewed by the mayor's office. Mayor's office has a review, it comes forth to council, I would vote for. I will say too, all of us, every day, have to do more for those who are not as fortunate. I think, Mr. Cardenas, when you spoke, it's not just other counties. And I do this all the time, I ask people, "What high school do you go to?" And I could tell you many times when I am down in the Fish District in Skid Row or somewhere, I'll talk to somebody, I'll ask them what high school, sadly, they may go to a Los Angeles high school. They are our brothers and sisters from Los Angeles who are there as well as others who are there and there's a larger complex problem that we'll deal with. Jan Perry, I'm committed to working with you and helping you in every way that I can on issues related to the challenges of people who are broken, who are left to fight on their own. And I hope we can walk again and I hope we can bring others to walk again. And I will personally ask this nominee because I believe that he would walk with me sometime and go to Station 9 and talk to the firefighters who constantly roar out the door to meet the needs of a violent world out there for people who don't have housing, who are living in the streets of Los Angeles. And I will work with you, Jan Perry, to try to get better public works, use all money and other money to clean the streets where all that debris is there, left to people in disease and other issues. And I will work to help you, Jan Perry, because you are the one who leads us in this area here. I thank you for calling me out last night, but I have to tell you, I have to go on my scale of how I look at it, when the mayor sends a nominee over, unless I personally know this person is not with what I would say is the integrity of to serve in a commission, then I would have an argument. And so, I will stand to support this gentleman, I will stand to work with this gentleman and others to try to focus on the whole issue throughout the county and the City of Los Angeles as those who are with our friends, who are those who are addicted, those who have problems of abuse and to try to help them live lives that all of us have found a way to live. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Garcetti will be followed by Ms. Skrull, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Parks, Ms. Rosendahl for a second time and Ms. Perry for a third time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I wanted to reiterate the compliments that my colleague, Mr. Cardenas, said about Ms. Perry, who has been about business on this from the very beginning. She's been about making sure that people actually can find dignity, that people can live in dignity and that neighborhoods don't become, in the words of President Bush's, homelessness are worse than Calcutta. And as the area that has the second biggest concentration of homeless individuals in Hollywood, I think we've been brethren or brother and sister on this issue in many ways. This council is turning its attention, I think, to homelessness in a way that gives me a lot of hope about moving forward and the city is doing that too. And each one of those battles that Perry talked about, I think, is important for each one of us in our own districts. We have a motion that we put forward about Project Yimby, which is, like it sounds, yes, in my backyard and trying to figure out how we can all recognize, not only that this is a crisis, but that each one of our districts has a responsibility. Ms. Rosendahl, when you spoke about what you're doing at the VA, you know, that is exactly the kind of leadership that we get no points for, but it is simply the right thing to do, that everybody around this horseshoe needs to do. And Ms. Perry bringing that immediacy of Skid Row to people, to smell it, to touch it, to feel it, to understand it, is something every Angeleno needs to experience, but certainly its leadership does. I think the message here has been loud and clear, one that Mr. Morell has heard and one that I know in my conversations with him, he really feels that he will have to prove himself. And not as an individual, we all, I think, recognize and not personalize, he's a very good man, a very capable lawyer. But what's critical here is not so much what he did, it's what the mix of LSA as an agency and the commissioners need to do overall. We need to have specialists in mental health that are there at LSA. We need to have specialists in housing policy that are there and that when we have too large of a magnification of one issue that's related to people who happen to be homeless, yes, of course homeless individuals have civil rights and human rights and we should be protective of that. But when that comes at the expense of everything else, that can be worrying to us as policymakers. But bottom line, I think that message has been heard loud and clear and I want to thank Ms. Perry for that. I also want to thank the mayor for pledging, as we look at the reorganization of LSA, to treating this council on equal footing. And that's very important for us and I know Ms. Perry's leadership, we have an ad hoc committee on homelessness and I hope that she will be the chair of that because she knows this issue better than any of us and has experienced it more, will allow her to be able to reconstitute that imploded agency right now in a way that actually solves the solutions. I'm comfortable today voting forward with Mr. Morell, but I do agree with the message that's been sent and I think it's been heard loud and clear and one that we need to reiterate because we need to change the debate and we need people to actually know what it is that they're talking about and to have felt that and certainly walking through the streets of Skid Row last night, we all did. So thank you very much for that, Ms. Perry.
Ms. Skrull.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you. I want to join everyone who has complimented Ms. Perry for her dedicated efforts, she's blushing over there, I think, her commitment to the homeless issue. Jan and I have worked on it probably longer than anyone else and probably Ed a bit when he was in Mike Hernandez's office, but I served under Tom Bradley for 10 years working on homeless issue and was the deputy director of the Interagency Council on the Homeless for HUD and went to so many cities across this country where homelessness has affected so many of the residents there, people who have been impacted by whether it be drug and alcohol problems, whether it be veterans, whether it be mental illness. It's clear, and I walked last night with Ms. Perry and the other colleagues, and I think it was historic to have that many of the council members walk down there and I was recollecting when I walked in Skid Row in the mid-'80s and how the problems existed then in a walk at Fifth and San Julian and the park that was there and the problems that we had in those communities and that we'd made great progress in some of those years in the late '80s and early '90s. But what we've seen is a decline, a decline in the ability for us to provide the services, a decline in our colleagues on the county and the state and the federal government commitment to providing the kinds of resources and funding. Because when homeless are not seen, people forget about them. And that was one of the, I think, unique things that Steve Lopez did in the LA Times, was put a face and a picture on those homeless that are down there. And many of them, as we heard last night, 70 to 80% of them are from the LA County area. These are individuals who have lived in our communities, who may have families, who may have been part of a social structure. But it was very important for us to see and the impact, I know Ms. Hahn and I talked about that, that we left last night on to our next events or to home and couldn't stop thinking about the pictures we saw of people down there. And so, many of them really seemed either mentally ill or had some form of addiction, but scary to see those young children. I appreciate Ms. Perry's position on this and have thought a lot about it. I was not here last week although read about it and heard some of the commentary over the phone, listening to council phone, but I think, I remember when we created LSA, I'm not sure, Jan, if you were here in the city at the time, but the creation of LSA was based on a lawsuit. We sued the county of Los Angeles. We sued the county because we said they were not doing enough on general leaf, some of their rules were arbitrary, some of their rules caused people to actually become homeless and not do the preventive nature. I'm not always in favor of those lawsuits, but sometimes you have to take a position and disagree. And I think that what Ms. Perry has demonstrated by taking some of the appointees to Skid Row to say, "Here's the impact of some of the decisions you have made or some of the actions you have taken," they need to see the faces of those individuals. So I will stand and support Mr. Morell today, but want to recognize Ms. Perry's concerns and that we will all be watching carefully to ensure that the members of this committee are reflective of what we need to do and the commitment we need to make to solve the homeless problem here in the City of Los Angeles.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I too rise and want to thank my esteemed colleague, Jan Perry, for the invitation. And I must say, I really was never more proud of the members of the city council who walked together last night after dark on Skid Row. It was a different scenario for us to be walking after dark, some of us had flashlights as we walked street by street. And I don't think anyone could adequately describe, unless you were there, the noise, the screaming, the cursing, the smell, which I'm having a hard time still getting out of my nose, or to see the conditions that people are inhabiting on Skid Row. But as my colleague Wendy said, Steve Lopez was able to sort of raise all of our consciousness with his series in the LA Times and last night we were able to say, "Where was Nathaniel, the violinist? Where does he live?" We were able to point out, unfortunately, the porta toilet where one of the women who Steve Lopez talks about actually held court. So it kind of put it in a whole new light for many of us to walk. And it was quite a sight to see Tom Abanj walk up to the homeless, to the friendless and say, "Where'd you go to high school?" It was quite a sight to see Bill Rosendahl leave our pack and walk up on the curb and shake somebody's hand, "Hi, how are you? What's your name?" You know, those are things I'm never going to forget. And Jan, you're right, I hope that what happened to me last night will forever change how I vote, how I think, how I view things, and I think it will. But I was never more proud of a colleague than I was of you. And sort of in between, I'm glad this isn't in my council district to, wait a minute, we all serve these people. This is all of our territories and all of our council districts are really here on Skid Row. And I'm changed. It's great when you come to a point in your life when you're this old and you can still change and can still learn something, and I certainly did last night. But I am going to vote for this appointee and not because I wasn't changed or not because I didn't learn something new or not because I don't view it any differently, but I actually think this is a great place for him. I actually think this is a great place for this appointee to be on this commission, to see the consequences of his decisions up until this point, to live, to make decisions, to breathe what he's done in his life. And you know, all these commissioners, I dare say, come with the willingness to serve, but I dare say, I dare say, all these commissioners, whether they're an airport commissioner or a harbor commissioner or a wreck and parks commissioner, I dare say, none of them really understand, none of them really know what they're getting into. None of them really understand when they tell this new mayor, "Yes, I want to serve," or maybe even asking this mayor to appoint them to a commission. I think it is only by serving on these commissions that these people are allowed to grow, these people are allowed to learn, these people are allowed to understand what the consequences of their decisions really are. So it's sort of like council committees, you never know if they're punishments or rewards. But I think this committee might be, this commission might be just the right place for him to really, truly make a difference on this earth. So, thank you, Jan, for opening my eyes and it has changed the way I think in the future about a lot of things.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just also want to thank Jan for taking the lead on this issue. And just to give you a kind of a historical perspective, I walked a footbeat on Skid Row in 1965, '66. At that time, you could actually arrest 50 to 60 drunks, we called them drunks then, alcoholics, most of them white males from the Korean and the World War II, absolutely no women and no children. After the court decision that made alcoholism a disease, the Sundance decision, it began to change quickly how that area looked. And what I think we need to look at today, even though we go down there periodically and look at it, it is much more orderly today than it was in the '60s because they didn't have people living in tents. Probably the only security and shelter was a box, which came the term, the cardboard apartments or condominiums. And so, these are things that, as we go through the historical perspective, and although many people will go there and say, "I'm just glad not to have this in my district," it reminds me of also, in the police department, of taking all city council members to a ride in Baldwin Village to see Sherm Alley because it was the only one that was in the City of LA. And everybody came and patted Russell on the head and said, "Thank you for bringing us, we're just glad it's not in my district." Over the next 10 years, everybody had one. And this is the kind of issue I think we have to look at. Jan Perry has the bulk and the most obvious homeless population, the issue is all of us have homeless. The other issue I think is important for us to realize, they didn't become homeless as a term until we closed down the mental health hospitals in the state of California. We no longer could call them winos or drunks, so we call them homeless, ignoring the fact that most of them have a mental health problem. Where I believe, in having watched the ACLU deal with this issue, is that they have forgotten that they are not going to be punished by the consequences of their decision. There are other people who are dying on the city streets, there are other people living in their body fluids, they will never get to that point. And I think what I see in looking at this, it's a great deal to get in a lawsuit and say, "We're going to stop the ability of LAPD from cleaning those streets where now it's almost impossible to do." It's also carryover on the voluntary compliance with medication, that now a mentally ill person no longer can give their, has to give their consent to take medication. We also have this issue voluntary commitment, that you have to now have a danger to yourself or another person element before they can be confined. That's a collage of things that have come from one system of thinking that has created this problem. With all of you having gone out to see Jan Perry's area, if we all showed up today and wanted to clean it, you could then begin to see what has been imposed by the injunction and the lawsuits, that you can't do that, you cannot go down and clean up the city streets. And I think the people that have suffered most are those who have businesses, they deserve a Medal of Valor for keeping a business alive and well on the east side of the City of Los Angeles. So we can sit and say, you know, that people may learn from it, but I think the issue is, as the candidate came the other day and said, "My only contact with homeless is I saw them out the window of my office," or "I went down to Skid Row after being nominated," or "I've never been on Skid Row after dark," are indications of a lack of understanding of the issue as he moved forward on this legislation. Having worked at Sixon Wall for almost three years, I went to work on Skid Row. And these are things that fundamentally are issues that you cannot ignore. These are things that I think we have to be able to say, certainly we support the mayor, but on the other hand, if there were any other commission, you wouldn't raise your head from your keyboard, you would vote for it and move on. But when there are people who have fundamentally set a pattern of what their belief system is contrary to what the city is moving forward, then I believe that you have to be able to send the message that this person is not an appropriate candidate. So Jan, I support you, I think you're doing one heck of a job, the systems are not working in your favor, but chipping away at it, you will make lives better and you may save some lives in the process.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. My admiration for Jan is that although she has not called anyone out on this issue from a citywide point of view, there have been countless times we've asked, "How do you deal with this complicated structural issue?" It really is about supply and demand, it's really about where housing will be built. We've asked, "Where do you see housing being built in your district?" Until this body chooses to engage this effort in a very clear and structural manner, the bottom line is, people will live where they can. And the market right now does not in any way give any value to the people who are living in the streets, it just doesn't. So what are we going to do about that? And that is what Jan is asking for. Where is the solution? How do we work towards a solution? Back in 1988... Back in 1988, I was a planner working on the single residential occupancy ordinance. I spent time in those lobbies, looking at the conditions, and it is appalling what children and women are living with, how they survive. And granted, for many of us in other districts, it's not a reality, it's distant, it's something you see in the movies. But the truth is, we have the ability to influence this. My gut feeling is, because of term limits, it's the kind of issue where there's no return politically. But the fact is, we should be asking the homeowner associations, we should be asking the Hillside Federation, we should be asking the chambers, Chamber of Commerce's, the Central City Association, where do you see housing being built in the city? Let's create the mechanism with the new council members to put together the process that says, in each neighborhood in this city, where do you see housing? If we can build the housing everywhere else, perhaps the people can fit into existing structures that currently don't exist. But we, this body, has to create that environment. The mayor is stepping up. He has made clear he supports inclusionary zoning. The question becomes, how does that policy evolve? How does this housing bond evolve? Where are the folks who are living not only in Jan's district, but in my district, in District 14, in District 13, that are living in the conditions that have been described? How do we address that? That's something for us to do. And term limits, can we address this? I believe we can, if we make it a priority.
Mr. Rosendahl.
The reason, Mr. President, I rise for a second time is just to get a couple of clarity questions from my colleague, and then to make a comment. Jan, please help me out, why Doug Morell symbolizes to you someone that you can't vote for?
I believe that Mr. Morell was a pro bono counsel on the Justin litigation.
And what was that litigation?
That was the litigation that prevented LAPD in the city from enforcing 4118 subsection D., which is basically to clear the sidewalk of obstructions, particularly homeless encampments. Those encampments that you saw last night, particularly the ones in front of Lamp, where there was still space to be on the sidewalk, will remain there because legally, we cannot remove them, as long as the sidewalk can be traversed, as long as there is space to walk on the sidewalk, as long as the street is posted, the sidewalk is posted for cleaning, so that people have an opportunity to pick up their belongings, however they define them. They can pick them up, the street, sidewalk will be cleaned, and then they can put them right back, as long as you can walk on the sidewalk. That's anywhere from having two feet of space, 18 inches, whatever. So that is why the homeless encampments remain, because legally, we cannot remove them as long as the sidewalk can be traversed. As long as you can walk on the sidewalk, the encampments, those tents, the blankets, everything, they will remain there, that will not change.
Okay, so basically, the ACLU said, the civil rights of that homeless person and the police coming to remove them from the street was not acceptable. Is that what happened, and the courts ruled that way?
Well, you know, I'm not an attorney, and so, you know, obviously, I wouldn't be able to put it in appropriate legal terms, but just from a layperson's perspective, it modified some of the protocols that the city has to engage in out there in the street, like the posting requirements. It also encouraged us to create a space in Skid Row for homeless people to store their personal effects, no matter how they define them. So it gives someone who's living on the sidewalk the opportunity to know when the street will be swept, gives them the opportunity to store their belongings somewhere. But the practical effect of this has been, as long as you don't totally block the sidewalk, you can basically live on the sidewalk. And that's basically what's happened, and it will continue to happen. I say that without any sort of, you know, malice or whatever. That's just the way it is. You saw it yourself.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to get that clarity here, because I do admire your leadership, and frankly, one of the reasons I ran for city council was to deal with the homeless issue, because I believe we need to solve this problem. And now that I'm no longer the new kid on the block, since we got two new kids who joined us today, I'm going to act a little bit more, you know, like I've been around a little bit, and let me say the following. The ACLU is protecting the civil liberties of people who have no place to go. I frankly don't want people on the street living in encampments, Councilman Zine, but until we find a place to put them, where else can they go? Prop 63 monies does create a revenue stream for us to create assisted living housing. And I want to challenge our city of Los Angeles to build 10,000 units over the next period of time. We want to talk to the mayor, since he's put $50 million into a fund for homeless housing, and $1 billion into a house trust. And with our new president and our present president of the council, we need to set a goal here for 10,000 units. These units can be in complexes with assisted services in the building, where they can get mental health support, drug and alcohol addiction support, where they can find jobs through programs like Chrysalis and other groups that are actually creating jobs for people. But until we find a place for these homeless people, we can't criminalize them any further than they already are. It's true, colleague Han, that I did shake some hands of some people, and I was advised afterwards to get my hands cleaned because of the germs being spread out there on the street. If we had clinicians on the street, if we had social workers on the street, and if we had an opportunity to say to these people, come on in out of the dark, we have a place for you to get services, a place where you can put yourself down at night, then I certainly want to see that happen over the next period of time in our great city. But I'm not going to blame the ACLU for this issue. Frankly, they're protecting the civil rights of people who have no rights, basically, because they're living on the street, they're hopeless and helpless, and they're powerless, they're sick, and they need support. So I just want to make some clarity on this particular nomination and the issue that we're dealing with. Did I make a mistake in what I said?
I think you have a couple of probably perceptual issues.
Help me with that.
If I can do that on his time, is that okay?
I'm holding it. Go ahead.
This is not necessarily a civil rights issue. This is a public health and mental health crisis.
Yeah, I agree.
Without any leverage to compel someone to go in for treatment, someone who is suffering from co-occurring disorders, dually diagnosed, may not even know where they are.
Right.
So you're protecting someone who doesn't know who or where they are more often than not. That's what you saw last night. We are protecting people's right to live in their own filth on a public sidewalk. I don't know about you, but I find that amazing, that we would even have to debate that issue. And the fact that most of the people are disproportionately African-American men who are veterans finds, I find that even more amazing, that we, again, would even have to debate that. The fact that we may or may not have enough beds is something that we all need to debate. I don't believe necessarily that having a committee will solve that, because I think there are some fundamental beliefs that some people may have. And, you know, we are a very congenial body, we respect each other, we all pretty much like each other. Everybody on this body is a very smart person, you know, and I struggle with having to take people where they are. And again, you know, this is not personal. I mean, you've seen me vote for almost all the nominees without even blinking. Oftentimes, I don't even say anything, I just, you know, hit the yes button or let it go through as a yes. But because, this is different, and I'll tell you why nominees matter. They had a Santa Clarita matter last year before LSA. We had a mixed bag of nominees on there. There were actually nominees on the LSA Commission who were fighting to ship homeless people from Santa Clarita down here every day. And I mean, if you believed that they would take them back at night, then I don't know what to tell you. You know, and I actually had to go to the commission meeting, I had to fight with the nominees, just really, really fight with them. And you know what? It's still almost passed. It's still almost passed. It's only because I went down there and I had to challenge their professional experience, their professional affiliations, their life experience, and how they were processing and interpreting the information, and how that translates to people living on the street. Nominees do matter. And, you know, in my opinion, I was elected in 2001, I've already wasted four to five years and left people behind. And as for the germs, we're talking about MRSA. It's an antibiotic-resistant staph infection that is already running through that community, and is something that survives outside of the body for longer periods than I need to comment. Many of our own city employees have already contracted it because of their service in Skid Row. So it's not just a germ thing, it's something that's morphed into something that not only makes the people who live on the streets sick, but, you know, you put yourself at risk as well.
I thank you, my gentle colleague, for everything you've said, but the bottom line is this, these people need help, and if we need to institutionalize them and coax them into some supportive assisted living, rather than a jail or prison, that's where I would like to put these people, because they do need help. Many of them don't have their act together enough to know why they're even there and what they're doing. That's where the social outreach needs to take place, and we need to bring these people into assisted living. It's not a police matter, it should be a social service matter, and we should have facilities for these people and treat these people for the issues they have. I agree 100% with you, they shouldn't be out on the street like that, but we need to put them in a setting where they get the support, not run them through the criminal justice system, which is pretty crazy, as it is right now, if you've ever been to the county jail like I have. It's a disaster that we have right in our neighborhood. I've toured that whole facility, and you do have mentally ill in there, more than any other location in America, is in our county jails. That's why we need to have assisted living facilities, we need to bring these people out of the dark and the cold. I agree with you, but not the policing aspect of it, but the social welfare safety net aspect. That's my point. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a couple of comments. One of the things, Bill, and I think it's important that we do have that level of sensitivity, the only problem is, the people that you're concerned with have to have the mental capabilities to accept it. And just to give you a short story, having dealt with folks on East Fifth Street, and when you go up to them and you say, why are you on the street, and why would you rather be here than in a bed that's in a mission? And they say, well, they have rules, that you can't steal, you can't use drugs, you have to be orderly, and if I could do that, I wouldn't be on the street. And so we have this kind of a view that people will just migrate to these locations. The unfortunate thing, and it's not the way it was built, is that the criminal justice system may be the only system that's dealing with the mentally ill today. The reason we have Department 90 in Superior Court is to bring everybody that's in the court system that's mentally ill to where they can get processed and get the ability to get services. The reason that the 80,000 drunks that we used to arrest in the city, many of them live beyond their time, is they got a chance to go to county jail and get a warm meal, and stay there for six months during the winter months, and then they were released during the summer. So we have this view of dealing with people that we may believe are conscious and sane, when in fact, they're not. And that's why the issue of saying, they have to give their permission to take their medication, basically belies the point of saying, if you're mentally ill, you can't make those choices. So we're making decisions based on what we believe are rational choices when we're dealing with a population that is not rational, nor can it make the choices. And so it is great that the system of public medicine should do this, it's great to have these views of assisted care should do this. The problem is, you can't make them leave the street to go there. The only time they leave the street is if you arrest them for a criminal charge, and in many instances, the only medical and mental treatment they get is in criminal justice system, which is unfortunate, because you cannot physically walk down the street and begin to move them. We've had people come up with great ideas to create, in the Mojave Desert, a place for homeless people. The problem is, it's called kidnapping, if you take them off the street and take them in the Mojave Desert against their will. We have people that came up with an idea of saying, the sheriff of the county, let's develop a place where showers and mail, except you have to physically force them to go there, again, you're violating the law. So we're dealing with some solutions that are far beyond what the population is able to bear. And it's great to have those views, and I think that's the dilemma, and as Jan said, it's not the ACLU. The fact that they pushed the issue theoretically and philosophically that doesn't match the problem, as I spoke to several of their members when they were going through the lawsuit, they had this vision that if they stopped LAPD from cleaning up the streets and the city cleaning the street, they would create such a fear that everyone would be embarrassed to then do their job. It hasn't happened. We have people die every day on the city streets. Unfortunately, more women, younger people, minorities that have no ability to move beyond that. And now we have a group of people that come in and then prey on the mentally ill, the homeless, the illiterate, and those who return from state prison. So we are keeping that cycle going, because we have a theoretical view that hasn't worked for at least 20 years that I know of, or more, because you cannot force people into a situation if they personally or physically choose not to be there. In years past, when the law was that if you showed that you had some form of mental deprivation, that you could actually be put in 72 hours. But the problem is, without that law anymore, you cannot do that involuntarily. You have to show the element of danger to yourself or someone else. And those are the elements, that's real life, those are the issues of real life that we're dealing with, not the theoretical. And so when we take the theoretical and go to East Fifth Street, we find out all the pieces that don't work.
I have Mr. LeBonge for a second time, and Ms. Perry to close.
Mr. Parks, and Mr. Rosendahl, I mean, I think Ms. Han talked about the article that the columnist, Mr. Lopez, wrote, what Mr. Parks spoke of historically from his time in the police department as a police officer to his rise to chief of police. I think the great thing about this debate, it's going to cause a collision, cause a collision of discussion, that hopefully, great good will come out of it, because it's not working now, and changes must be made. And it's not just central Los Angeles and central city east, but it is the county of Los Angeles, it's the state of California in all ways. I think it's important, at this point, if we could reflect, and God willing, we're all here a year from now, on what progress we have made, what progress this commission has made, what problems us individually have made on trying to stem a problem that has grown for many, many years. As you mentioned, who was on Skid Row, from Korean War veterans. I remember when Mr. Farrell had the MacArthur Park area, and many of the people there were pensioners or railroad-retired, or that lived in the single-family homes. It was before the great immigration that this region of Southern California took, and have changed in other social services, and the challenges that that community has gone through. So this collision of debate is good, and then we've got to push it more. But I think it should be, it's once, and Mr. Parks is correct, once we allowed people to live on the sidewalks, we gave up the right to protect them and to protect others. And hopefully, it could come back, and hopefully, we could get laws and others, and I believe in this nominee, may see the light, that you see the light every day, Jan, to make a difference in this, and I pledge to continue to work with you. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Perry to close.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the dialogue and just love those compliments, keep them coming. I always like a nice compliment. But for me, the focus of my actions are those people that you saw out there in the street, and that will always be my primary focus. That's what I remember when I make the decision to take a position one way or the other. I always measure what I do by whether I believe, in my heart of hearts, it's going to work or not work. And I've shared with you some stories, you saw some things for yourself. I've talked to you about my perception of 4118, and that nominees do matter. I express my concern about the time that has already been wasted, and I have a concern that we may be headed in the same direction. Don't know. But what I do want to say is, thanks to Dennis and Greg and Bernard. Someone made a copy about, a comment about me standing with the cops. I don't perceive them as cops, I perceive them as individuals who are working in the field for many, many years. And so unlike some of us who may have had professions that kept us in an office, these were individuals who worked in the field for many years, and in areas like the one that I represent, and now that Mr. Huizar represents, sometimes the police are the first line of defense on many, many levels. Social worker, law enforcement, friend, counselor, giver of information. Think about the man who lives in front of the Los Angeles Times on the sidewalk. Some of you have seen him. He often is wrapped in a trash bag, he has festering sores on his legs, and he has maggots in his wounds. The only time he gets a shower or antibiotics is when he actually gets put in a 72-hour lockup, because legally, we cannot force that man to go anywhere. lockup because legally, we cannot force that man to go anywhere as long as he stays on the sidewalk. He will remain on the sidewalk. When he goes into 72-hour lockup, he gets a shower, he gets cleaned, he gets some meds, he gets some antibiotics, and then he's back out on the street again, 72 hours at his spot again. There he will remain. I will just close with this. I'm very comfortable where I am today. I'm very comfortable with what I have said. I have no regrets. This has never been personal. This has always been on the issue. And I hope that each one of you has that experience on the issues that matter most to you because it's a nice place to be. I hope that you will support me. If you can't, you can't. But I'm glad that I have said what I needed to say on the record, in public, and then let the chips fall where they may. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We're just about ready for a vote. There is one speaker card that was submitted during the council's discussion from Reverend Estrada.
I'm Father Richard Estrada. I'm the Executive Director of Joveness Inc. We work with homeless youth, been doing that for the last 18 years. I live in residence at La Placita Church, which is like a Skid Row for the Latinos. And I want to support you, Jan Perry, because you know what you're talking about. You're living it and you're prophetic. And I just want to add that we haven't heard here about what's going on around the north end of downtown where I live at La Placita. There are individuals, for Latino, who if they come from Hollywood, they dump them there. The police, the medical hospitals. If they're Hispanic, Latino, they don't take them to downtown. They take them around to La Placita where all this development is going on. And there is an issue of mental health and public health that's not being addressed. So I want to support you. You're being a prophet today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 39. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number four was called Special Counsel Member Parks.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we have the staff from Wreckin' Park, please? I would just like to ask a couple of questions. I certainly support the General Services and the Security, but the issue I'm concerned about was the recommendation that the regional parks are the only resource or will be getting the remaining resources of the 19 positions that are dealing with the naturalist issue. And what I'm concerned about is that although there are many parks within the city of L.A. that are not labeled regional, the fact that particularly in my district, the fact that we have so few parks, all of them are regional by not labeled, but by design. And if we are not willing to take some of those naturalist kinds of issues to other parts of the city, then we will lose the fact that the thousands of people that come to Exposition Park will not have access. And I know that it's not owned all by the city, it's partially owned, and that may be a limitation. But also, we lose sight of the fact that two parks on La Brea, whether it's Houston Park or Jim Gilliam Park, or right across the street from the largest facility, I think, in the county, Kenny Hahn Park, and the newly prepared walking trail down the corridor of Stocker, that none of these programs and kinds of issues will go outside of the regional parks. And I just don't understand how we would relegate that level of service, particularly if we're sending a message throughout the city that that is an important function and these are important issues that everybody should support and be privy to, to relegate them only to 10 or 12 regional parks seems to ignore the rest of the city. And I just would like to see if you can comment on what the rationale for that decision and what you base that on.
Well, I certainly can, Councilmember Parks, and that's a very good issue. And I think the intent is really not to take the interpretive programs into other parks. What we would be doing with the staffing is we would have assigned staff to those 10 regional parks. But we intend on expanding our interpretive programs, our science and nature programs. Those will continue to go into parks like Epic and other programs throughout our system and we will be taking those programs on the road. So in terms of our interpretive programs, we're going to actually expand those. We will take those programs and share them with kids in all of our recreation centers throughout the city.
Okay. But now, it appeared as though from, if I read the report properly, that even you were asked whether you need additional resources. And even when you responded there, a dozen or so additional positions, it appeared again that they're only going to be relegated to regional parks as opposed to documenting this potential expansion for other parts of the city. And I'm just concerned that if you don't happen to live close to Griffith Park and some of those larger parks and you happen to live at Harvard Park or something like that, that we're basically sending a message that you don't get these kinds of services, you don't get this understanding, you don't get the ability to see another part of the culture and such that the city is providing. And it's really, the report is really light on that expansion that you mentioned today that any other parks were going to get any kinds of services.
Well, maybe we need to make that a lot clearer in the report, but we will have dedicated staff that are dedicated to our interpretive programs, building those programs, working very close with our class parks, and we will be taking those interpretive programs into really all of our rec centers with a focus on the class parks. So we'll have dedicated staff for that. The staffing into our regional parks will be onsite managers that will be dedicated to those parks. So they will be your park ranger for Harbor Regional or Griffith Park or Hanson Dam Park. But we will have a separate dedicated staff for interpretive science programs. Those will be going into all of our parks.
Now, what is the, that's the intuitive. What is the other issue of the naturalists? That's from the walking trails and such?
Well, naturalists fits very closely with the interpretive naturalist programs to look at.
Because I'm concerned that if you're dedicating the resources to these 10 parks, but yet you're going to put programs in other parts of the city, you're not going to get the same level of service because we all know that people pay more attention to where they happen to be housed. And so I would, you know, and again, I understand that you're losing a good deal of resources for a good reason that we're, they're saying basically, the law enforcement part of the General Services is going to cut down response time to parks in general. But there are some significant services that other parts of the community will go without, and I think it's a major difference between programming and having dedicated resources. It just seems to work better and you get more services when there's a dedicated resource as opposed to providing a traveling roadshow that you can pick up and move on and give services periodically to other parts of the city.
You know, currently, we have 40-some rangers in our program. And when you look at the staffing on a daily basis, we probably have six or eight rangers that are deployed on a, at any one time throughout the day. So currently, we do not have dedicated rangers in any of our parks because we really don't have the staffing to do that. Once we go into the consolidation and General Services provides the function of law enforcement throughout our park system, which will actually increase the number of bodies in our parks for the law enforcement function, that's when we felt we could pull back and dedicate actually individuals into regional parks. But currently, we do not dedicate staff into parks.
No, I'm talking about the new plan. That's what I was referring to, the new plan of dedicating the 19. Was there any consideration of breaking the 19 regionally so that they could provide services to parks on a regional basis rather than to just regional parks?
We really had not looked at that. We were looking at our largest parks and the need that's been there for a long time to actually put identified individuals into the largest parks that have, that's been lacking in our system for many years.
And we have, what, almost 400 parks in the city?
Yes.
And so we're dedicating, what, 19 people to about 10?
10 parks.
Yeah. See, I would hope that, colleagues, that this is something, I think all of us have the same issues in parks, that we may look at this in a different light of maybe these 19 people can be distributed in a regional basis. They have so many parks that they're responsible for, but to house them only at 10 parks and the other 390 parks end up with a traveling roadshow doesn't, in my judgment, appear to be the most equitable way to get services throughout the city. And that's my concern and if you've not looked at it, I would hope that that was, be a part of the equation, that we just not dedicate resources, but we look at how we can spread those minimal services to everyone.
Actually, the other parks, the, other than the large regional parks, are getting the service from General Services.
Are they getting the security? But they're not getting the interpretive and the naturalist material or studies. They're actually getting more security, which nobody's going to ignore. I'm talking about the 19 dealing with the issues that you're dedicating in the new configuration and then saying, "We'll take it on a roadshow to the remaining parks from these 10 centers throughout the city," which again, if you look at them, they're not necessarily spread geographically throughout the city.
Throughout the main discussions we had on the creation of Office of Public Safety, it was a commitment that once this consolidation was completed, collectively, General Services, Wreckin' Parks, CAO, CLA, all of us would come back and revisit the deployment of not only our General Service Officers, but also our park rangers. Because we, everyone knows, once you consolidate, there's going to be a period of time, there's going to be some growing pains. But that we would come back and look at the deployment of park rangers subsequent to the consolidation. Because I know Congressman Labonge has a very serious concern regarding how many park rangers will remain and, you know, dedicate to the parks and also to the naturalist function and what additional resources are needed. But I always, I've always seen this as a phase in process, with the first phase being the consolidation and then the subsequent phases being, we wait for the dust to settle, we determine what's needed in the parks, and we look at the context of, especially given the timing now of the upcoming budget process. But that will be, I don't reckon Parks is going to address that.
I don't disagree. I think that the General Services concept, supported 100%. I think once we get a couple of deals done on pursuit policy, that's going to move. I'm just concerned that we go forward on the 19 being dedicated and again, in some communities, saying you're going to get a better enforcement effort, but yet in some communities, we're going to get more of a naturalist and interpretive programming effort sends another message that may not be the healthiest. So again, I would really like that being reconsidered because I just don't think we get, as a city with 400 parks, that we can dedicate them to eight or nine and believe that a traveling roadshow is going to be the same as a dedicated resource.
We can revisit that with Wreckin' Parks on a go-forward basis.
Mr. Labonge.
Griffith Park is the largest park in the city, Mr. Parks, and in the county, 4,212 acres. Angeles National Forest in the county mostly is over 79,000 acres there, rangers. Kenneth Hahn State Park, which is the most important park in the future of parks in Los Angeles, has those previously county organized to run the park for the state in that. The issue is right now, Mr. CAO, let's say there's no ranger program in Los Angeles and excess of the zoo, an excess of Travel Town, an excess of the pony rides, an excess of the gardeners and caretakers, how many people would be assigned to run Griffith Park? Excess of the observatory? Nobody, because you do not assign people based on acreage. And part of this argument was to try to get the Park Department to, as this has evolved from this whole program, to develop people who are responsible for an area of the city. When there are a building built on a park land, all of a sudden, there's a Jim Combs, a park director, Assistant Director One, Assistant Director Two, and park recreation. There may be seven or eight, 10 actual people who are there at Danker, at Jim Gilliam, at Algen Sutton, or wherever their parks are, at North Hollywood Park, or wherever they may be. This is a real important discussion that we're having that still is, it's like trying to fit something that is not fitting, like you got a jacket that's not fitting on right. And I would ask maybe, Mr. Parks, as Chair of Arts and Parks Committee, and I know Ms. Gruel, who's been a champion of the consolidation program for efficiency, maybe we should have a joint committee and also ask that absolutely all the principals, whether it's the Chief of Police or his representative, the General Manager of the Parks Department, the Head of General Services, and everybody get there on that. At Expo Park right now, the state officers handle all security there, correct? Yeah, but if there's a crime that occurs in the city path of Expo Park, they'll walk on and help out. But, so I think there's a big discussion here and I think the interpretive program is real important and rangers are real important. Members, I was involved when I worked for John Farrell, when they, there was no such thing as a class for park rangers. They were park maintenance supervisors. They became park rangers. There's an evolution going on to try to create this program. So I would, with a nod from Ms. Gruel, if she thought that was appropriate, with a nod from Mr. Parks. I know we're six months into the fiscal year coming up real quick here and I know this is already in the Parks Department shop. I'd like to maybe have a joint committee on this subject with budget and finance and also get graphs of the parks. They're not going to take away an interpretive program at any of the smaller parks, but there needs to be somebody responsible for the bigger parks. There's nobody there now in Runyon Canyon. There's 90 acres and nobody's there, absolutely nobody's there. So there needs to be someone assigned there. And this is what this was all about. Plus, there needs to be more than what's left on the shelf, Mr. Fujiok. I don't know, we're going to wrestle and fight it out. I think there should be 37 to try to cover it. And also, those regional park rangers could go to the area parks and recruit the naturalist concept. So would you agree to having a joint on this? Do you think that would help?
[inaudible].
We don't want to combine the two? What's the, I don't want to combine the two. Let me hold this on. Will you speak to it? Let me figure out what we're doing.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to Mr. Parks and Mr. Labonge. Very good questions. And I spoke to Mr. Labonge this morning about ensuring the Office of Public Safety, what the goal was. And I want to probably reiterate that we've heard this before. The goal of creating the Office of Public Safety was the fact that, number one, we had no coordination between our security forces in the city of Los Angeles. We had no memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Los Angeles Police Department and General Services or any of the other city departments. Actually, the park rangers in Wreckin' Parks was the one department that had a memorandum of agreement. We found after September 11th that the kind of coordination we needed was not there and didn't exist. And so two things were very important to me and I know to Mr. Labonge as well, which is, one, coverage of all of those parks and ensuring there was no loss of coverage of any of the parks in the consolidation. And two, that we were providing a greater public service in providing security forces. That was critically important. I think that from what we look at and talk about, the role of a ranger, our parks have changed dramatically. I remember going to my parks and having the man or woman who was there and they were able to be the interpreter and to be able to be the person who was talking about the parks and where to go. What we've found in so many of our parks today is that they have become the police officer, for lack of a better term, in those parks, that the kinds of issues they're dealing with are of a more, sometimes violent nature or trying to protect the environment for the kids or other families that want to come there. I am more than happy, Mr. Labonge, to have a discussion about this, but I heard Mr. Parks say the same thing, which is, Office of Public Safety was introduced two years ago. We've gone to five committees and now to go through this. We've had it in two budgets. We're about ready, if Mr. Parks schedules it in two weeks, hopefully, on his committee, and waived from the other committees to move forward here to the full council. I think that we all agree too that our parks need more rangers. At Runyon Canyon, if there isn't, I mean, there should be a ranger there, but Office of Public Safety has not taken away the ranger from that community. So I think what we have to have is a discussion about how we want So, I think what we have to have is a discussion about how we want to see park rangers perform in all of our parks, at the same time, move forward on the consolidation of our Office of Public Safety. Um, because I co-signed or seconded Mr. Labange's motion, I think it was several months ago as well, uh, which was to increase the number of rangers that we have here in the discussion as part of that budget. Um, but let's just be clear, there's two, two goals. Uh, they complement one another, they're important to do, uh, but one should not stop the other from going forward. Um, and so, um, that was one of the things Mr. Labange and I spoke about this morning, was ensuring that we understood the difference between the two, and if they needed to go combined together, we could do that as well, but not to hold up Office of Public Safety from moving forward.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes, to be followed by Mr. Labange and Mr. Parks.
Just to be clear, colleagues, this is a receive and file, correct? Okay. So, we're receive and file, that's the actions being asked of us. Uh, but I think this is an important discussion, because we talk about the assessment of, of what are our priorities. And the one variable I don't hear, which I hope gets factored in when we start looking at how we allocate personnel, is the fact that, when you have density issues around parks, uh, when you have the kind of pressures that are being felt by the officers, uh, and the program folks, the rangers, they actually have that variable as a weight, on which we talk about where the folks are going to serve the city of LA. So, MacArthur Park, the mantra is, over forty-five thousand people per square mile for a little park like MacArthur Park. Lincoln Heights, we're up to thirty thousand now. Uh, Echo Park, it has its challenges with its density issues. We could go on and on down the list. So, are we going to put that into the formula, is my question to the folks at the table?
I had mentioned that, um, once we go forward with the consolidation, then we would look at the needs, uh, not just the regional parks, but all the parks with respect to the number of park rangers. I mean, we're restricted to, we have Consulman Parks concern regarding restricting it only to the nineteen identified regional parks. I don't feel we should do that. I think we should look at it all at once. Um, it's, it's the sequence of events that I think is important. Um, I would personally advocate that we go forward with the consolidation, and that during the budget hearings are going to come up within the next three months, because they'll start with internals in my department soon, and then subsequent to that will be in, before the full Budget and Finance Committee, that Wreckin' Parks comes forward with a plan that addresses the concerns expressed around this horseshoe, about how we would enhance the park ranger function, um, not only at the regionals, but at, at all the critical parks throughout the city. At that point, by doing so, you can see this issue in the context of all the other issues. Because there's going to be, as any year, some very important, very critical choices we're going to have to make when it comes to the budget. But I can absolutely make an argument for the need to increase the number of park rangers at our parks. But then, you're going to see me sitting in this corner during the budget hearings, I want to make some equally strong arguments about other critical issues in the city. But we needed to see it in the whole. But the sequence is important, because it's the proverbial what comes first. The park ranger issue, to me, should follow the consolidation. The consolidation will address to making the parks, um, in our city facilities safer. You know, the naturalist function isn't going to do anything until the parks are safer. And so, and we have a better coordination of security and safety, certain, you know, resources in our parks. So, we let that go forward, and then we have that discussion. And then, we don't limit it to just the, the, the big parks we all know about, because MacArthur Park, in terms of, um, well, I grew up, I played in Lincoln Parks all the time, but MacArthur Park, in terms of landmass, is tiny. In terms of usage, it, there's more people per square inch, not foot, at MacArthur Park than probably any of our other parks in the city, so.
Right.
We all know that.
Obviously, and we all know that, and we let it deteriorate, though we did, until a few years ago, when we started creating that focus on program security. We finally started placing a sense of value for that community and the people that live there. And that's what I'm trying to address here, is that for far too long in these halls, we've always valued the real estate.
The mass.
And the mass, and the size of things, as opposed to the people who are paying their taxes for their quality of life to improve, and the number of people. And there, I think, is a very real assessment of how we start valuing this city. Do we continue to value the land over the folks, the individuals who are actually paying their taxes to, to live in this city? Or are we going to start reassessing our formulas, so we can talk about a quality of life that everyone should have? And I'm not saying take away from Peter to pay Paul, I'm saying, how do we realistically promote change in the city, like our parks, to provide the kind of environment where gives a reason why our kids should think they should graduate from high school? I mean, thirty-nine percent drop a ride in some of our high schools is incredible, right now. Our parks overrun. I mean, Lincoln Park still has its challenges. For all the great things Wreckin' Parks has done there, the gang issue is still intense. I can go all the way down the list. But the bottom line is, it's up to us to assess how we allocate the resources. That's why I appreciate this discussion, because those values have to be, uh, spoken to, and how we allocate these resources will be an incredible step that we take.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker, before Mr. Labange speaks, I also wanted to point out, colleagues, that today is Bill Fujioka's thirtieth year of service today for the City of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Mr. Fujioka, on that. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fujioka. And Mr. Reyes, thank you. In previous council districts, I was involved with MacArthur Park, and I don't know if your analyst is here to answer, because it's specific, but who's in charge of MacArthur Park? What person? What person is in charge of MacArthur Park? Is there one person? Ed, I just want you to hear this, because what I'm fighting for, I want for our parks, for our big parks, and maybe Jim Combs answered, that there be one person who's in charge of the park. Who's in charge of MacArthur Park?
Uh, Larry Malin. He's a director.
What's his, Larry Malin's the director? He's a recreation director?
Yes.
Does he have any other parks?
Uh, that's his only park, and then he has quite a few staff, maintenance and recreation staff.
And the maintenance staff comes from Griffith Park. Just so, so we all know that we all share, the maintenance staff is housed in Griffith Park, comes down Commonwealth to that location to serve those people. Lincoln Park, who's in charge of Lincoln Park?
I'm not sure who the individual is, but a director, and they're assigned just to that park.
What I'm trying to say to the CAO, there should be a ranger there. You know, a name, like a senior lead ranger in Lincoln Park, a senior lead ranger with the support of Rampart Division, because you have such challenges that are there, that are amazing. And what's amazing, too, about MacArthur Park, in my past experiences, is on Sundays and Saturdays, the problems were not as great, because the families took over, and sometimes those who would be bad to the public lands or public others would not come. It's the families that we got to get to the parks, and that what increases it. And I just think our whole thinking has been wrong on how we look at parks, whether it's, uh, Harbor Regional Park, and you have a special ranger now who's sleeping down there. What's the name of that ranger?
Reggie.
Reggie the Alligator in Harbor Regional Park is there. It has to be looked at, at Hanson Dam and all this stuff here. Mr. Garcetti, I would like to ask, uh, that we continue this today. I'd like to ask to continue this today, because I'd like the General Manager here, uh, of the Department of Recreation and Parks, and just to know, I'd like to bring some graphs down here, because I don't believe, Mr. Parks, that this is not a, a bad step, it's a good step. And I don't believe that the rangers who exist will bypass the, uh, Silver Lake Rec Centers and the Algen Sutton Rec Centers and, uh, other rec centers in the city. I think there'll be an integration there, because that's what it's all about, because it truly is. And I got twenty-four more seconds, but this is not about efficiency. Uh, it's not about consolidation, uh, it's about making it best for the public. And I, I can't stand for consolidation unless I feel that the parks are going to be protected by a ranger program that serves it. So, I ask that we continue this today.
Okay. Thank you. We have that motion on the table, but we'll take that up after Mr. Parks speaks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, basically, my intent of bringing this up was two-fold one. I view these consolidation totally separate than the issue of the remaining positions. Uh, I do not in any way support that we slow that down any more than it's already been slowed down for two years. But I do believe that, at some point, Bill, you promised us an evaluation report on consolidation, which I think, they're no longer park rangers, they're general services security. But then, when we deal with the park ranger issue, it deals with the nineteen remaining, that then, we need to assess whether they should be deployed on a regional basis versus they should be deployed by park. And I think.
And that's what I'm advocating.
Okay. I would be pleased that, in dealing with this issue, that, number one, if Wreckin' Park can give us something in writing that tells us what we're going to do in the interim, when you talked about the expanded programs and such, that would be helpful to us, so our field office knows.
We can do that.
Okay, what we can expect. I'd also feel comfortable that, as we get ready for budget, that you be prepared, Bill, to come forward with what we should be thinking about in next year's budget, so that we could be moving forward. But again, uh, I would say that this issue that we have today, uh, we could, as far as I'm concerned, we'd move forward on, uh, move it forward, but they, in my judgment, should not be connected as it relates to consolidation versus the remaining nineteen. Because the minute consolidation is approved, those officers from general services are no longer park rangers, they're general services, and then we need to deal with the park ranger issue as a separate matter.
We will, my office will work with Wreckin' Parks and, because I haven't, I haven't looked at their budget in its entirety, we have our, Wreckin' Parks budget analyst looking at, but to ensure that there is a budget request addressing this particular issue. So, we'll do that. If this should be continued tomorrow, um, not that I'm, I'm that important, but I won't be here tomorrow. I intend to attend, um, Consulman La Torre's mother's funeral tomorrow, so, he's a good friend, and I want to excuse myself and go to that funeral.
Okay. We do have a motion to continue. I don't know if there was a second or not.
Continue a week.
Okay.
No problem, a week.
Council's in recess next week.
Okay. Two weeks, Friday's okay with members? I don't know what the schedule, Friday. If that's okay, Bill? Friday. Thank you.
Is there any objection to a continuance? If not, then see you back on Friday. Next item, please.
Item number nine was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item nine.
Yes, Mr. President, there are people on both sides of this issue that would like to speak, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to do that at this point.
Okay. So, just for the record, this item has had public hearing in committee. Uh, I believe Mr. Rosendahl's asking us to reopen the public hearing and allowing those who are here, uh, to present additional public comment on item number nine. So, let me, uh, begin to read a list of names of folks who have submitted speaker cards, and you please form a line behind the podium that would expedite the public hearing. Uh, we'll put up a ten-minute clock, we'll ask each of you to keep your remarks to about a minute, uh, or so. Uh, the more time you take, the less opportunity there is for those lined up behind you to speak as well. Council calls forward Martin Rubin, followed by Stanley Lamport, Anna Marie Brooks, Ed Holman, Dorothy Nichols, Alan Hess, Charles Fisher, Kent Marsh, and Lilian Laskin. Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Martin Rubin, West Los Angeles. Thank you for the opportunity. At the Plum meeting, the decision was made that, uh, and Councilman Reyes pointed out that it was a difficult decision, that the community effort was substantial to show the Westdale Courtyard Apartments should receive the historic monument status. Uh, it was a difficult decision, he said. Both sides presented good evidence. The experts on our side, with the exception of one, received no compensation, and they su, they, they are clearly the leaders on this, on these type of structures. Uh, it would be a shame for these to lose this piece of history that Los Angeles has. And what, what I wonder is, if it was a difficult decision, the, you should err on the side of caution and preserve these, these beautiful twelve and historic structures. And, and we do have the strong support of our councilmen on this, so I urge you to, to vote for the historic structure.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And again, if additional speakers would form a line behind the podium, that'll move things along.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Stanley Lamport. I am here today on behalf of seven of the twelve owners along National Boulevard. I'd ask that they stand for a moment and be recognized. All of them oppose the designation of this property as a historic landmark, and they're asking you to accept the recommendation of your Cultural Heritage Commission, which is your designated expert on these issues, and the unanimous recommendation of Plum, that these properties do not qualify as historic monument status. The Plum recognizes that there is no legal or factual basis for this. These issues were fully aired, both in front of the Cultural Heritage Commission and in front of Plum. They are not identified with any historic person or event. They are not notable works of a master architect who influenced his age. These buildings are not notable architectural specimens that are inherently valuable for study. They are not particularly, a particular reflection of our culture or economic or social history. At best, they are examples of what is found commonly in other locations. They do not represent anything which is uniquely or particularly significant. They are highly altered, mundane structures. This would pose an extreme hardship on many of our clients, who are individuals who invested their life savings in this property and stand to lose everything if they are saddled with the restrictions of a historic cultural designate, monument designation. Uh, the Christians in particular have invested their life savings. They've already paid sixty thousand dollars in Ellis Act fees. The buildings are economically obsolete, and it's costing them seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a month. This designation would impose a hardship on them and the others that is not fair and not appropriate. An HCM designation is not an appropriate way to address these concerns. It is a straitjacket that restricts the ability to find acceptable planning solutions that address our housing needs. This is really a wolf in sheep's clothing, which intended to use the HCM process for land use controls. For that reason, we're asking that you accept the recommendation of Plum and the Cultural Heritage Commission, and determine that this property does not meet, these properties do not meet, the HCM criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Marie Brooks, excuse me, followed by Ed Holman.
Good afternoon, councilpersons. You are accustomed to seeing me here in support of preservation items. Today, I am here to ask you to please not condone the misuse of the preservation process in potentially making these properties a landmark. I was asked to review the application. It is factually unprovable. There is no architect for any of the structures. There is no historic personage connected with these structures. They don't reflect the historic patterns of our nation or city. I would ask you, please, do not condone the abuse of the historic preservation process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed Holman, followed by Dorothy Nichols, and followed by Alan Hess.
Good afternoon. I have owned and lived in the National Boulevard Department since nineteen ninety-four. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of the Mar Vista community. One hundred percent of the owners are against the historic designation. The construction of the National Boulevard Apartments was average at best, and after more than fifty-five years, the building shows substantial deterioration structurally and mechanically. The buildings have become very costly to maintain and lack many of the modern amenities that prospective tenants desire. The majority of the owners are over fifty-five years old and will lose thirty to forty percent of their retirement investment if these properties are made historic. The true agenda of the people supporting the historic designation is to prevent development. Please vote against the designation of the twelve outdated National Boulevard Apartments as historic cultural monuments. The experts all agree that these buildings are not historical, though owners do not want it. Declaring these buildings historic against the recommendation of the experts is an abuse of the monument definition process and only cheapens monuments that truly are historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nichols?
Hi. I think the other side should get five minutes since they, I mean, six minutes, since they've gotten six minutes.
We'll make, we'll be able to cover everyone here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. The Mar Vista, we do have, uh, experts here to counter what those experts have said. The Mar Vista Historical Society sponsored this nomination because this unique resource reflects the broad socio-economic and cultural history of post-World War II America. It is connected to two major historical and socially important events, the return of World War II veterans and the subsequent birth of suburbia. It's an architectural-type ranch evocative of a period of time, nineteen forty-nine, examples of which deserve to be preserved for its massive effect on Los Angeles and America. And most importantly, it is unique in its intact row of twelve multifamily structures and green spaces designed to look like single-family homes to perfectly fit in with the single-family homes in Paul Truesdale's first planned community, Westdale Village. The protection of post-World War II structures reflecting the lifestyle of the common man is just beginning to be understood as important to preserving our history. So, it's key to listen to the few experts who specialize in this area. history. So it's key to listen to the few experts who specialize in this era. Alan Hess is considered one of the foremost authorities on mid-20th century suburban architecture. He's the author of nine books on it, including "An Architectural History of the Ranch Style." Even the opposition cites him in their report. We give you Alan Hess.
Thank you. It's an honor to speak to you.
Thank you. Mr. Hess?
Yes. One of the biggest stories of Los Angeles after 1945 was suburbanization, the growth of the city out into undeveloped areas. The problem is that Los Angeles has been accused of being a sprawling city that created its suburbia without plan. And of course, Los Angeles has been criticized for this for years. The Westdale Apartments are historic proof that Los Angeles' suburbia was planned. This building, these buildings, these 12 buildings are historic, in my opinion, for two reasons. Number one, they are representative of the ranch style. As you can see from the picture here, they are one-story, low, informal, and particularly, they are set in nature. Suburbia was about letting people live in nature, with backyards, with front lawns, and these buildings reflect that trend. Unique to the post-war period. The other reason why these are historic buildings is because they demonstrate a planned area, a planned suburban district. Adjacent to this is the Westdale Single Family Ranch Style Home District developed by Paul Truesdale. He sold off these pieces of property to another developer to build these 12 or more, originally, apartments. But in so doing, he set up the CCNRs to govern the design of these buildings so that they would match, flow, integrate, unify with the single-family homes. That is proof positive that Los Angeles, in the post-war period, was architecturally and in terms of planning, organized in a unified way. I would just end up by saying that, in the past, the Victorian style of home, the Art Deco apartments, the craftsmen bungalows of Los Angeles, all styles which are today welcomed, loved, part of the richness of the city's architecture. Each of those styles originally were criticized as insignificant. They were bulldozed, torn down, to our regret today. The newer, younger ranch style is just today at the point where it is being rediscovered. A number of noted experts, myself, John Chase, who is the head of planning for West Hollywood, and also Historic Resources Group, a large and respected group here in Los Angeles, have all supported on the record this nomination. So we need to enter this new era of suburbanization, of the ranch style, and honor the notable preserved remaining examples, including this. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. The last three speakers is Charles Fisk, Ken Marsh, and Lilian Laskin. We'll add an additional two minutes for them.
For the record, my name is Charles Fisher, and the other two speakers have informed me that they will relinquish their time so that I can speak on this. The importance of this nomination is not the individual structures, but it is actually the grouping as a whole in that they manifest a representation of city planning as done by a private developer. Back in the 1980s, we worked very hard with the AB 283 process in the Highland Park area to try and bring about a balance between the single family and the multiple family. This was something, we worked with city planners such as Frank Perrello, who drove this into us, and said it's so important to bring the multi-use and the single-use together. Here in 1949 is a perfect example of how this was done. It is also the only remaining example on the west side of Los Angeles. The examples that were cited in the Brooks Report do not hold water to this particular project. They are not tied in with any development of single-family homes. They are strictly standalone projects that were built by their builders. Some of them have their own merits for their own reasons, but they do not meet the criteria for this reason. This is the only example on the west side, and not knowing for sure what's in the San Fernando Valley, it may be the only remaining example in the city of Los Angeles. It is very important. The other part of it I want to mention real briefly, the CEQA issues that have been brought up on this. I would like to quote from a letter from Maritza Pritzkop, who's a land use consultant. She is quoting from the CEQA ordinance. "I know that there was concern about the fact that there may be an EIR required from this. If there is a disagreement among expert opinions supported by facts over the significance of the effect of the environment, the lead agency shall treat the effect, that effect, as significant and shall prepare an EIR," unquote. And then she goes on to say, "In this case, ample evidence by architectural historians has been submitted in support of the project for consideration as a historic resource." This is a very important part of it. I have done successfully, I have advocated and nominated and researched 75 successful nominations for historic resources. I do not take this lightly. I have done this for a number of years. I believe that this particular property, because of its planning implications, its overall effect with the grand social changes that occurred after World War II is an extremely important part of our history. In closing, I want to mention a nomination I did a number of years ago. It was known as the Albion cottages. The Albion cottages in Lincoln Heights are an example of railroad housing that was constructed in the 1870s. It was a very common type of board and batten housing. Yet, over the years, that housing disappeared until the Albion cottages remained as the only ones left. We did that nomination back in 1990, I believe it was, and attached to one of the cottages is a little market known as Milagro Market. It's a miracle they have survived. Please, we need a miracle that these will also survive as a telling story of our past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. That closes public comment. I'd like to ask Councilmember Reyes, he's on the speaker queue.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank everyone that's come down here. I want to thank you for your organizing, your advocacy from the community side. Charlie Fisher, I've been working with him since we started the whole designation of Highland Park, which is probably the largest historic overlay zone in the city. And I mentioned in committee, I also have the first one that John Flora worked on back when, which is the Angelino Heights District. It's one of the few tools that are provided to this part of town when we talk about protection. But today is a very tough situation. I want to thank the property owners as well, and Councilman Rosendahl, because there's no doubt there's a lot of passion on all sides of the issue. But colleagues, normally, the City Council and Plum would never have seen this matter. They would have never seen this matter if it wasn't for Councilmember Rosendahl's motion, which are normally a nomination for historic status would not come to the council if it failed at the commission level. So through his actions, we brought it to the committee. And I'm told that significant number of nominations essentially die, if you will, at the Cultural Heritage Commission and the council will never see those as well. I am an advocate of historic preservation. I think my record will speak for itself. But in this one, we have experts on both sides, both credible and knowledgeable, and I appreciate the time they've taken to assert their point of view. And the question before us today is, does a row of 12 post-World War II courtyard apartments rise to the status of a full-city cultural historic monument? Someone bring up the city staff on this issue, if you may, please, Mr. Lambert, to the front desk. Our own city staff advised that, in their own professional opinion, these properties do not meet the criteria. The commission voted to deny the designation. One commissioner, who is an architect and resident of CD1, felt that they are not unique architecturally or historically. The question is, are they unique or are they unremarkable and a generic form? I believe there could be an architectural solution, looking at, assuming the property owners and developers can cooperate and will not put up an insensitive and ugly sucker box that destroys areas' character-defining features. The deep setbacks creating a sense of open space, the low-scale style, and the row of mature trees should also be respected. Mr. Lambert, in your assessment, given the report of the commission, can you give us, what was the opinion of your, of the staff when they made their report?
Lambert Giesinger with the Planning Department. Councilmember Reyes, yes, the staff opinion in this case was that the properties do not rise to the level of historic monument designation. And this was arrived at, you know, with, with study of the properties. The commission toured the property. We looked at all aspects, both interior and exterior and site plan, and the commission did vote on a split vote of three to two against designation, but it was staff's recommendation that it not be designated.
Again, I need to maintain within the integrity of the process. We did go through a series of discussions. We held it off for a week. We did go through the documents and colleagues, following the professional city staff, and giving their assessment. I believe we need to support their recommendation, which is to disapprove the nomination. If I urge support of the Plum Committee report to disapprove, including these properties, then list historic cultural monuments. And that would be my position.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Councilmember Rosendahl?
Yes, I rise to this occasion, and I must say that it's been a tough one. I've had sleepless nights, literally, trying to figure out how to make this work. I'm voting no on this, for the reasons that I, early in, in my experience as a candidate, put a letter in suggesting that this be considered for cultural and historic significance. We took it to the next level. When I got elected to the City Council, we formally went through a process that brought in the Cultural Heritage Commission. And when we did that, there was a vote that was two-two. It was troubling, because two experts felt it was cultural, two experts felt it wasn't. I had the option of just letting that go on and work on it from that end, but I thought that the integrity of that process should allow that commission to revisit it, where I had hoped that the experts that spoke today, Alan Hess, who's written many books on this subject, and others, would get a chance in another public discussion to vote, to speak, and then a vote would be taken. The decision was made by the commission not to open the public hearing. So they voted three to two, which angered me, frankly, because I wanted them to vet it all out again, which they didn't with the new expert. So now I'm confused even further. It goes to Plum. We get a chance in Plum, as a member of the council, to express myself there, which I did, and to listen to my colleagues, and obviously to the community and to the developers, who are the people who live there too, and who are residents there, who have a vested interest in it as well. And many of them, frankly, when they got involved in this, it was early in the by right process that gave them that opportunity. It wasn't until the desire by the community of 1,100 people signing petitions, pointing out the value from historical, cultural, built in 1949, that have setbacks in trees and add to the compliment of the beauty of the area, did it rise to even a discussion on cultural heritage. Now it's before us. The motion, if you vote yes, basically says you agree that you should deny the cultural status. My colleagues, we have rules around here, and some are informal. And one of the informal discussions is, whatever the councilperson member from a certain area aggressively seeks, we all support, one for all, all for one, rule of 15. Many have come to me and asked me, what should we do? Frankly, when Chairman Reyes and Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Weiss acted, they acted unanimously in the position that they took. I've said to my colleagues, vote your conscience. I'm not pulling votes and saying, okay, here's the vote, vote for me because this is in my district and I'm the guy who knows it all. But I want to make it very clear. My biggest concern are twofold. One, to protect historical, cultural groups of housing, and, as one of the speakers there said, the socioeconomic diversity of an area is critical. It's been an ongoing comment for me on the council floor that 58% of my constituents are renters, and they're threatened by this whole process of location, location, location. Developers and community by right can do certain things. These are tough issues that we have to wrestle with in the months ahead to come up with an overall city policy. So, again, I want to thank Mr. Reyes for his open process, his thorough process, allowing all sides to speak. And I want to thank the council president for opening up the public hearing again and letting the community participate. But I will vote no on this issue, to preserve the cultural heritage aspects of these developments, and most especially, to support many of the folks in the 11th district who strongly believe in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Labange.
I wanted to first thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. Not every politician, not every elected official loses sleep over what goes on during their responsibilities, and I just want to thank you for being that kind of person who does lose sleep. And I know you do over this issue and many other issues that come before us. It's very painful for me to disagree with you on this particular issue, as we did in committee. Unfortunately, the evidence on both sides, in my mind, weighed toward us not being able to work this out as a cultural, historical monument within the city of Los Angeles. Hopefully, fortunately, something will ensue on that site that will be good for the community. But the bottom line is, the property rights of this individual need to move forward. Again, with great regret, I just wanted to thank you for your diligence and your effort and for your commitment. But unfortunately, I'm going to be voting, as I did in committee, on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, just could I ask you a question too, as a district representative? I think it's important. The Cultural Heritage Commission, did they consider it? Did they go out and look at it, or did they defeat it before they went out and took it under advisement? Or do we know?
We can ask him first, and I want to respond to that.
Say your name for me again, I'm sorry.
Lambert Giesinger with the Planning Department.
Lambert.
Just to clarify, since the motion to consider the properties was initiated by the council member, and initiated here at council, the Cultural Heritage Commission took that under advisement. And so our first step as the commission was to tour the property. So we, since the item was taken under consideration and referred to the commission by council, the commission then did tour it. So the aspect of looking at the application and touring the property was wrapped into one.
They did diligence on that?
We did, we did.
Did all commissioners look at it?
Yes.
Good. And they couldn't find the value in that photograph there? What did they not like about it?
I think the commissioners, I mean, they found that it did not meet the criteria of the ordinance. And, I mean, I think that's, that's maybe the photograph is representative of some of the problems.
Yeah, and I know the gentleman who spoke at Lincoln Heights, the Luna Auto Courts. I don't know if you know the Luna Auto Courts, which is a beautiful auto courts. There's certain structures in the city that have a flavor that should be preserved, and I don't know where we are on the Getty study, the inventory. Where are we on that? Do you know?
That has not been commenced yet. I believe the funding is still being secured for that.
Because I know Mr. Weiss was a champion of that a couple of years ago, as chairman of the Arts and Parks Committee, and we pushed it on. I don't know where we are on that. Because I would rather say, Mr. Rosendahl, when it's great to survey an area, say what's a value. Then also, you've got to look at the economic challenges, because we don't own it, the city of Los Angeles doesn't own it, and, but someone does own it in that deal. I'd like to support you, Mr. Rosendahl. I'm going to support you, because as a council member, preservation is real important. But the economic issues are there such that someone may, again, is there a plan for this property?
Yes, I believe there are plans.
Do we know what the plans are for the property?
I believe it's for multi-unit housing.
Multi, which is appropriately zoned for the area?
Correct.
Right, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure the Cultural Heritage Commission, look there, are you tasked with the Cultural Heritage Commission now?
Staffed to the commission.
Mr. Orrin is no longer there?
He's still staffed to the commission as well.
Okay. So I think there's a value in these courtyards. I mean, when you spoke of the, again, Lincoln Heights, when you spoke of the survey, there's certain buildings that are not going to be replaced in the modern technology of architecture and the challenges of space and development. So I thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for bringing this forward, and I'm going to vote with you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Colleagues, that, that closes debate on the matter, but I do need to bring to your attention that in a very short period of time, we've gone from 15 members to 10. And so- that in a very short period of time, we've gone from 15 members to 10, and so we need to maintain a quorum and get through the rest of our agenda. So the item is...
Decorum.
And decorum. So the item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is item number 12, and that was called special, and as much as there are two reports on the file, a motion is required to adopt one of the reports. They do conflict.
Which committees are they?
Budget and Finance and EQ. Budget and Finance recommendation is to receive and file, and I believe that recommendation is the more current.
Okay. Ms. Perry or Mr. Parks, do either of you care to move one of the reports? And I'll recognize the member on the queue.
I moved the Budget and Finance report.
Okay, Mr. Parks has moved his report. Mr. Labange, you're first on the queue.
I'll move the, Jan, you come to your speaker's phone? I think your report's better. Jan Paris' report's much better. We should have a discussion on this. This is an important aspect here of composting. So is there a hurry on this? We could continue it?
You can.
He wants to move it. I want to, I, I, I believe in your report's better than his report. Environmental quality, and I think the CLA is here.
Can we, can we approve both reports? Both, let's just move them both.
But also with the, with the, yeah, but with that, Mr. Parks, what you say, the compost pile, and the composting for Griffith Park, and all things are green in there. Jan, you want to speak to it?
I make a motion, we move them both. Let's move them both.
Councilman, I think all that's before you is a special fund, but there is already a special fund that's set up to do this. This money goes into the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund. The, the only item before you now is setting up a special fund.
Yes, Sewer Construction and Maintenance Funds has nothing to do with composting.
But it is where the, okay, but it is a special fund where the proceeds go. It says nothing, it says nothing about the use of those proceeds ultimately.
But wouldn't it be great to have it in a composting fund, so that we could, all that's green could be composted and used and recycled again and diverted from landfills? I think it's more important to have it in a special fund, so it could be focused that way. It's a sewer and maintenance fund. Ms. Perry, I'll look for your leadership on this.
Okay, I'm going to give you my leadership. Just like I led, I'm 39, okay? My leadership is this. Mr. Parks' Budget and Finance report is subsequent to mine, and he has incorporated the elements of what I did in my committee into his report, so I'm willing to go with his.
Let me just ask a question, Mr. CLA. Is there a subsection within the Sewer and Maintenance Fund? This is sewer, this is something that's very important. I know where all the Green members of council are, but this is very important. This is a composting issue, where if all this matters composting Griffith Park, and it's asked, then it'd be in a special fund set aside, hopefully to continue composting citywide, not get lost in a sewer maintenance fund. So is there a subsection that we could have on the trust fund, or the fund for this?
Mr. Labange, the way I understand it is that the funds are going into the revenue fund of the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund, and the fund itself is supporting some of the efforts associated with this composting. It's about $10,000 a year that's actually generated from this composting facility.
And the fund?
And indeed, the, the Public Works Department had indicated that, given the amount of money that is generated, that it would be most appropriate to leave it within the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund because of the administrative costs associated with tracking a special fund that would actually only see about $10,000 a year.
Could there be a subsection of that fund? At least calls that out, or something line? I, I would tell you, funds get lost in big funds, and then all of a sudden you lose the mission of what it's about.
Well, the cost of the facility is actually far exceeds the amount of money that is generated.
I understand, but a line in that fund that says composting, because I think composting is very important.
I believe a small, a sub-account.
We can go back to you. There, there are...
A sub-account?
There are multitudes of accounts within the Sewer Construction and Maintenance.
Do I move that we do a sub-account, Mr. Parks? Is that okay? Just to, and then move that? All right, thank you. That solves that. Do you have a second on that motion? For the sub-account? Second by Mr. Parks. Thank you, I support Mr. Parks and his great report.
Ms. Perry, you are still on the queue? Should you be on the queue, Ms. Perry? Ms. Perry, go on once.
I'm sorry. Repeat the question?
You're on the queue. That's you.
I did not press my button.
Well, it happened. Okay.
Maybe somebody else.
Madam Clerk, what is before us? Did you follow that exchange?
Well, there was the Budget and Finance Committee report was moved, and then Mr. Labange made a motion to have a sub-account, which is, but the public, excuse me, the Budget and Finance Committee report does recommend receiving files, so I believe addition, an additional Rule 16 motion would be more appropriate.
You rule, Madam Clerk.
So Mr. Labange will prepare a Rule 16 motion, and we'll see that introduced.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miller, could you prepare a Rule 16 motion? Bach?
Thank you.
All right. With that clarification and the Budget and Finance report before us, open the roll. Close, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let's, Madam Clerk, let's call the cable items next. We have some requests for that. And why don't you call all of them together, if that's acceptable, to the chair of the committee, Ms. Hahn?
Those are items 41 through 46, and they were all called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Okay, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I know it's late, and we're, we're down to 10 members, but let me just tell you what's before us. And that's, what's before us today is the issue of transferring cable systems from Adelphia and Comcast to Time Warner Cable within the city of Los Angeles. And what that means is that if this transfer is approved, almost all of the 650,000 cable subscribers in the city will be serviced by Time Warner. What this is not is the franchise renewal of this cable system. That will come in a few months. The recommendation from the city attorney and ITA is to approve the transfer applications. And under federal regulations, the city looks at three criteria when making a decision on whether or not to approve this transfer. Those are whether the company meets legal, technical, and financial qualifications to serve as a cable operator. Yet the item comes before you today, before this body, without a recommendation from the ITGS Committee, of which I'm the chair, and I want to tell you why. A few months ago, the leadership from our Communication Workers of America met with me to discuss their significant concerns regarding this transfer. In my opinion, the concerns of the employees and the workers must at least be heard, addressed, recognized, I wish resolved, if we truly believe a company is qualified to serve as a cable operator in our city. Technical upgrades and infrastructure are not merely cable wires or television stations. It is also the people who build, maintain, and operate these systems. All must be coordinated and respected if such systems are to work well. I asked Time Warner to commit itself to recognizing employees' right to organize and bargain collectively. I asked for nondiscrimination in hiring or treatment based on union membership. I asked for commitment to Time Warner's plan to offer jobs to all employees affected by this transfer. And while Time Warner has responded to many of these issues, the CWA is still greatly concerned about this transfer, and after hearing their testimony in our committee, I voted against this item. Colleagues, because the ordinance was filed late, I am told that we do need to continue this item, which I recommend we do until tomorrow. And I move to instruct the city clerk to agendize the ordinances that are on file on these items. And I still believe that the only way for our workers to have their concerns heard and recognized is for them to sit down and discuss this before tomorrow, which they have agreed to do this afternoon. So I am hopeful for that when this item comes up tomorrow, we can have a unanimous agreement that this transfer should take place, and hopefully we will have testimony from the workers that this transfer is a good thing for the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I move that we continue this item until tomorrow.
We have motion to continue from the chair. Mr. Reyes?
Seeing we've had a long day, and Plum Committee should have started 40 minutes ago, I'll reserve my comments for tomorrow.
Mr. Rosendahl?
I just want to, want to say, I, I support the chair of the committee, and, and I'm very sensitive for the worker issues, the CWA issues. I look forward to hearing a positive resolution of it. I certainly support the continuance tomorrow.
Mr. Padilla, did you push a button?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, support the, the motion to continue. I think there is, there are some speaker cards that have been submitted, so we should make a conscious decision whether to hear public comment today versus tomorrow, and if it's not going to be today, then let me at least voice for the record one of the concerns that's to be raised under public comment, and that is, on behalf of Motusuma Sparza, previous owner of the Buena Vision cable system on the east side, who was years ago sold to Adelphia, and I think they got into some legal complications here that's now part of the bankruptcy. So as we're deciding here whether to take an Adelphia franchise, in that particular instance, to new ownership, I think there's at least legal questions that the city needs to put on the table and address before we finalize our entire action.
Okay, we have before us a motion to continue, and why don't we have a vote on the motion to continue? Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, the matter is continued until tomorrow. Next item? All, all of the matters are continued until tomorrow.
Item 33 was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. On Thursday, September the 2nd, 2005, at approximately 5:30 a.m., the body of 22-year-old Irma Jennifer Aguilar was dropped off in a parking lot near the 500 block of Los Angeles Street in downtown Los Angeles. That is, at 5th and Los Angeles. The victim, who was eight months pregnant, had been murdered, wrapped in duct tape, bungee cords, and covered with a bed sheet. The suspect who was seen dropping off the victim's body is described as a 33-year-old African-American man, approximately six feet tall, between 220 to 225 pounds. He was seen wearing a black jacket, a black beanie-style cap, and dark pants. He was also seen driving a newer model gray or silver four-door vehicle. The deaths of Irma Jennifer Aguilar and her unborn child were caused by the willful criminal conduct of one or more persons. This senseless act of brutality must be punished to the fullest extent. That is why I have offered this reward motion in the amount of $75,000 to encourage anyone who has any information about this crime to come forward. Anonymous calls are welcomed. Please call 1-877-LAWFULLL.
Okay, the matter is before us. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Item is approved. Next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, December 13th, and Wednesday, December 21st, for city business. Those vote meet council policy.
Mr. Garcetti's excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, December 2nd, to leave at 11:30. That meets council policy.
Mr. Cardenas is excused.
And Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused for tomorrow, Wednesday, November 30th. Personal business, a motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Weisar is excused.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Any housekeeping items? Does that take care of that? Okay. Do we have any announcements? Mr. Reyes wanted me to announce to all of you that the Plum Committee will begin at 2:10 p.m. Do we have any other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
President, we have one announcement. The Healthy Parks, Healthy Communities Training Workshop, Wednesday, November 30th, 9 a.m. to 2 p.m. at 8101 South Vermont at the Community Coalition. For reservations, please give a call to 213-380-4233, extension 15.
Any other announcements, colleagues? See no hands? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Okay, if everyone could please rise for adjourning motions. Including folks in the back of the chamber, if you could please rise? Going once.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, it brings me tremendous sadness to rise and ask that we adjourn in memory of Mary Alatorre, mother of former councilmember Richard Alatorre. Mary Alatorre passed away this past Saturday morning, November 26th. She was born on July 1st, 1917, and was a lifelong resident of Boyle Heights. She married Joe Alatorre, the love of her life, for 25 years, and she was a wonderful mother and grandmother. She was the number-one supporter and the very first volunteer on each and every one of Richard's political campaigns. She never missed one. Mary Alatorre is survived by her son Richard and her daughter Cecilia, by five grandchildren, Derek, Daryl, Amanda, Ryan, and Melinda, and three great-grandchildren, Gabriela, Mariela, and Daniela. A heart's go out to the family, and in particular to Richard and Angie, and Richard's sister, Cecilia.
All members.
Also, colleagues, on behalf of Councilmember Wesson, ask that we adjourn in memory of Kenton Earl Peppers, born August 30, 1928, and who passed away on November 23rd of this year. Mr. Peppers was a longtime resident of Los Angeles, was very active in community events and affairs of his local Veterans of Foreign Wars post. He is the father of a longtime employee of Councilmember Wesson's, Trudy Abraham. He is survived by his wife Aina, his daughter Trudy, one brother, and several grandchildren. Ask that we adjourn his memory.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Elma Foster, who's the sister of Alazine Ford, who's my executive assistant. Ms. Foster was born in Natchez, Mississippi, on September 24th, 1945, and she served as a dietitian for the Veteran Administration Hospital in Los Angeles. She passed away at the age of 60 on Wednesday, November the 23rd. Funeral services will be held at Mount Maria Baptist Church, 11 a.m. on Wednesday, November 30th. She's survived by her son, William, her mother, and five sisters.
Ms. Perry?
I'd like to adjourn in memory of actor Pat Morita, whose portrayal of the wise and dry-witted Mr. Miyagi and the Karate Kid earned him an Oscar nomination. He passed away November the 25th at the age of 73. In 1984, he appeared in the role that would define his career. But before that, for many years, he played roles in films like Thoroughly Modern Millie and series such as The Odd Couple and Green Acres. His breakthrough role came with Happy Days, and he followed with his own brief series called Mr. T. and Tina. He was born in Northern California on June 28, 1932. He was a son of migrant fruit pickers and spent most of his early years in the hospital with spinal tuberculosis. He recovered only to be sent to a Japanese-American internment camp in Arizona during World War II. After the war, his family tried to repair their finances by operating a Sacramento restaurant. It was there that Morita first tried his comedy on the patrons. Because prospects at that time were difficult for a Japanese-American stand-up comic, he found steady work in computers at a company called Aerojet General. But by age 30, he entered show business full-time, and I think his career speaks for itself. He was buried at Palm Green Valley Mortuary and Cemetery, survived by his wife and three daughters from a previous marriage, and there will be what promises to be a very special memorial service to be held in Little Tokyo on December the 14th.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Mr. President, I was going to make the same discussion regarding him. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Rosendahl will be a second on that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Council's adjourned.